And we should be good to go now, Chairman McCollum, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 14, 2022, meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. This meeting is being held on Monday this week instead of Wednesday because there's a student event on Wednesday at the same time as a school committee meeting. And we knew that there was a topic of interest. Well, they're always topics of interest. But we moved that so that we could facilitate optimal participation. The meeting, as always, is being streamed live on Facebook. It is on Cohasset 143 TV and is also on Zoom. And those that are participating via Zoom can utilize the Q and A feature to participate and raise questions or comments. Just if they were here in person, and we are happy to field those.
If I could add, Chairman McCollum, just for those of you at home watching on Facebook. Well, I guess if you're watching on Facebook, you'd have to be where you need to be, but just in case anyone is on Zoom or is having trouble with this. It is on the Cohasset Live streaming Facebook page. Last time, for some reason, it went to the town page, which is fine, but just so everyone knows, it's on the Cohasset Live streaming page where it's been almost every meeting except for the last one.
Except the last one. So thank you to Ms. Megan Driscoll for telling me about that. We rectified that this time.
We did. We fixed it. Sorry about that confusion.
So would all committee members present, including the kids' own roll call, Mr. Clear? Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. St. Ang?
Present.
And I am President Craig McCollum, meaning all five committee members are present as of 6:02 PM. Moving right into our first agenda item, that's public comment. And as we normally do, I'll start the public comment section by just sort of reiterating some rules. First and foremost, public comment is reserved for points of discussion, comments, questions, complaints, concerns that aren't related to an agenda item. If you have something, a question or concern related to an agenda item, please wait until we arrive at that point in the agenda. I'm sure a lot of people are here for the or are watching on Facebook or Zoom for the Free Labor Day discussion. And we will absolutely hear all the comments related to that topic once we get there. Public comment is for comments that are not related to something already on the agenda. Also, we will try our best to respond to public comments in a meaningful manner. But it's really, it's not on the agenda, so you won't see us get into a real robust discussion of public comments. But we do like to respond and have a little bit of sort of discourse on it to incentivize everyone to share their thoughts. Also, as we're going into a topic here in a few moments that probably a lot of people have perspectives on. We would just reiterate the three comment per household rule, which means that if you have any comment, question, concern, any coherent thought, incoherent thought, any thought whatsoever. You get three of those per household. And we do that because we have to limit the amount of time that we're spending addressing community concerns. And we hope that three comments per household allows everyone to adequately express their thoughts. It can be in rebuttal to a response. It can be a follow up. But we have to limit the amount of input from the community as we get through these meetings now. We are so happy that we have that. We have to have that rule because that means that there's a lot of participation, which is great. So all of that having been said, we'll move into public comment. We'll give everyone that's at home watching utilizing Zoom a few moments to utilize the Q and A feature to make a public comment. And if anyone is physically present and would like to make a public comment, do so now.
I don't see anyone yet.
I was talking for a long time, so I feel like people would have had a chance.
Give them a shot.
All right. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which as always is our superintendent's court. So I would turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chairman McCollum. We had another fabulous couple of weeks at class public schools. As you mentioned, we have an event that has caused us to move this school committee meeting to tonight. Those events, I should say, are all town concerts where we're going to be showcasing our students of grades four to 12 in the auditorium. Both events begin at seven, and I believe Tuesday is, of course, and Wednesday is our band. So very excited to watch the efforts of our amazing music teachers and our students who always shine at these events. I'm excited to see that myself in the next couple of days. So also, speaking of shining, our, as you know, our winter sports were in full, full kick in the tournament. And you know, as, as we always do in Cohasset, we play a prominent role in any tournament because we have such wonderful student athletes. Proud to say that our Cohasset Girls Basketball Team made it to the Elite Eight, including an exceptional and thrilling upset of what were then number one ranked team in the state cathedral. So that was an amazing comeback and win for our girls. Our Cohasset Boys Basketball made it to the final 16, and they lost to Real Neil Bider to Wareham in the round of 16. And our Cohasset Home Boys Hockey made it to the final 16. I believe they, they fell to stone in another close contest. And then I want to mention that our ski team, for the first time, I believe in program history, won the Ski East title, which is wonderful. So our gymnasium, our field house will be now adorned with acknowledgement of our ski team for, for winning the Ski East title. So that's, that's amazing. And I'm just as proud about the fact that the girls Alpine Ski Team won the Sportsmanship Award. So it's nice. So and I, I'm sure I'm missing some accolades for some of our other sporting teams. I was, you know, able to tweet out and put in my newsletters. Definitely input, I should say, updates regarding our gymnastics team and our, our wrestling team, for instance. But if I'm missing anything in terms of tournament news, I'll make sure I update it in the next, in the next meeting. But I'm just very proud of those teams and all of our sports teams for the way that they carried themselves throughout the tournament and for the amazing work that our coaches did with our teams. And of course, that includes South Florida Director of Attending. So congratulations, everyone. And that's really it in terms of my, if you have any updates for, turn it over to Jenna, Dr. Scholz.
No, but we have, well, we have professional development.
Yeah.
At the end of the week, we have a half day on Thursdays, which is going to be building based and department based. So that's exciting. Our data. And then on Friday, we have Raymond Porch, who is actually the Director of Equity and Inclusion from the Burlington Public Schools, and he's spending the day with us. So yeah, we're really fortunate.
It should be a wonderful day. And I should add that I did attend with our MECO Director, Elise Gittens Carl, a conference for all MECO program superintendents and MECO directors at Gillette Stadium this past Friday. It was, it was wonderful. And among the topics that we spoke of were really the progress that we've made as a MECO program. The individual progress that school districts are making regarding equity, cultural responsive teaching. We are proud to share other work that we're doing, PDs coming up. And really looking forward to how we can continue to grow that big important program. Just very proud to be a part of it. It was a beautiful space too. So that was, that was a really nice day. So again, that was just a wonderful event that happened the past week. So I'm proud to also introduce, as always, Jenna, who is one of our school committee liaisons. And I'll leave it to Jenna to update on anything you'd like to update from a student's perspective.
All right. First of all, as always, it's great to be here. This week is an exciting week at Class of High School. There's a lot going on, and I think all the students are looking forward to the nice long weekend that we have. We have to have Thursday, no school on Friday. As mentioned, there is all school concerts on Tuesday and Wednesday. And I know all the students are really looking forward to that because it's the first big concerts in the auditorium where we can be maskless and see everyone singing and playing their instruments. So I know everyone's looking forward to that. Also, we have our dance, our semi-formal on Thursday, and all the proceeds go to prom. So I know a lot of kids are taking the long weekend into school on Thursday, but I think all this.
Hold on, let me mute when you say that.
I think all the seniors, especially just want everyone to buy a ticket, just to give the proceeds to prom and show your support. But looking forward to that. It's great to have a semi-formal again. We missed it last year. So really looking forward to that. And also, Senora Nelson, Mrs. Norton, and Mrs. Root are doing something really special for our community. And they are, they are setting up a fundraiser for the next three weeks called the Resources for Refugees. And all the proceeds go to Ukrainian war refugees. And it's a competition between all four grades. And right when you walk in the front lobby, there's going to be four different jars, and every dollar donated adds into your jar for your grade. So just if anyone has cash, or you can use my school bucks website, which is where parents put money into the lunch account. So credit cards already saved in there. So parents can just donate through that website. And it'll be really exciting, great competition between the grades in the winter. On April 1st, we'll have a breakfast. So that's definitely something to look forward to. And I think every grade should take advantage of a nice free breakfast and show your support for Ukraine. But yeah, other than that, classes are still ramped up, heading towards AP exams in the next couple of months. So I know a lot of my classes are stepping away from the textbooks and into review, which is good and a little bit scary for exams. But I know everyone's looking forward to getting through that, and then that's pretty much it.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. If you have any questions, Chairman McCollum?
Questions for Jenna. Mrs. Clear?
I was curious.
It starts this week. I don't know what specific day with the jars will be up, but people can give cash whenever to any of the free teachers.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Dial?
Jenna, thank you. It's always invaluable to get the student perspective is why we're here. I'm going to impose on you a little bit, put you on the spot. One of the things that we are talking about is school start date and potentially having to start date before Labor Day as opposed to what was traditionally done after Labor Day, thinking maybe that in sooner. I guess from a student's perspective, if you have thoughts on what you prefer from a learning cadence, just for input?
I definitely remember in the past that I have started school before Labor Day previously. And it doesn't really make that much of a difference because it's only, I think, one week. But it is nice to start a little bit later. But I know, like, come summertime, I'm always itching to get out of school. It's just I go home from school and it's so nice and light out, still warm, but it's hard to focus in that environment. So I think come September, a lot of the students are ready to just get back at it, and sports are already started with preseason. So I would think it'd be valuable for the students to start that extra week early. It's not that big of a deal, to be honest. I know in September, I'm kind of ready to get back into it anyway. So it'd be valuable to have an extra week off in May. But then again, I, like I said, I don't really think any of the students care that much because we're going back.
That's true. You're not going to get out of school altogether. That's not, that's not one of the pros.
Right.
So thank you for your thoughts on the spot, and then thank you for your updates. Very helpful.
Mr. Kearney, you have any?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm impressed with your resources for refugees. I think that's a great way to try to help us right now, seeing what we're seeing on TV. That's a good way to show kids that they can give something or do something.
Thank you, Mr. St. Ang.
I don't have any questions, but thanks for your report, of course.
Nor do I, Jenna, as always. Thank you so much for being here and sharing your thoughts and updates. Can we let?
You can. I should mention there's, I know there's also, we have Miss St. Peter here, so maybe you know a little more about this than I do. But there is a nice fundraiser happening at the middle school too, the Change the World. It's called Change the World Project. And I believe it's regarding the Boy Who Harnesses the Wind reading that we're doing. It doesn't impact in Malawi? Is it for Malawi?
Yeah, usually the money goes to a charity that the students choose.
Yeah.
They almost always choose when you come to one of those charities.
That's right.
That's usually where it goes.
That's good. That's to harness energy for impoverished communities in Africa, I believe. So that's a wonderful thing. So a lot of our kids giving back, trying to make a better, a better place in the world. You know, we all know we need that. So thank you, Jenna. Yeah, Jenna, so we'll give you some time to go home and do your studies.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your contributions.
Of course.
All right. So as I, as I move on into the agenda here, very excited for this student spotlight or spotlight on student learning, I should say. Two wonderful educators. We have our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, Lisa Raden. And we have one of our tremendous students at the middle school, the Scale St. Peter, St. Peter, sorry. I went all French on you. So I will introduce Ms. Raden to talk about what she'll be highlighting today. So.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For the opportunity to be here, for those folks at home. I'm really excited to share a technology spot right with all of you. And Mrs. Scale St. Peter has graciously agreed to demonstrate one of our investments this year that came out of COVID. It's an application called Perdeck. And this is participatory, so we do encourage you to also participate. And she'll take you through that instruction. And it's an application that helps her achieve student outcomes, increase student engagement, and create an inclusive environment in the classroom. And is that a lead, Gail?
Thank you for that nice introduction. I'm so excited to be here today. I absolutely love this technology, and I can't wait to show you how it increases student engagement. I'm going to share my screen. You should see that up there in a second. And if it's okay with you, I'm probably going to walk around. Is that all right? We're good with that. And as I'm showing you like this new technology, I'm going to show you old technology at the exact same time. I have a clipboard and I have just a mouse, and this will allow me to actually move this anywhere I go. So old technology and new technology all at the exact same time. Okay, so tonight I'm going to introduce you to Perdeck. I'm going to talk about what it is, why we like it, from a student's standpoint, from a teacher's standpoint, how it works. You can have the opportunity to try it if you want to and take some questions over there. Okay, so what is Perdeck? It's so simple. It's just an add-on to Google Slides. So you can take any slide deck that you have already made, and you can transform it into an interactive slideshow. Why we like it in terms of student engagement? First of all, it increases student engagement. And I'm going to go through an example of what it's like to teach just a traditional Google slideshow versus what it's like to teach with Perdeck. So when it increases student engagement, it talks about up there on the screen, you can do that differentiation, how it allows for that. It allows for student responses to be anonymous. This is super important because this allows students to take risks. It gives students the opportunity to have feedback in the moment. It allows you to help them in the moment in which they're struggling, and that the feedback is also private. What that means is when we are showing responses out to the whole class, nobody has their name attached. So I'm going to go over this idea of how a regular Google slideshow might be different than Perdeck's student slideshow. So for example, let's say I ask my students about teaching temperature, and I ask them about temperature. What is temperature? What do you think temperature is? I might ask that to the entire class, and you'll always going to get like three to four students who are raising their hands because those are the students who are comfortable doing that. They might know the answer already, or they just might be comfortable taking risks. They're okay if they're, if they get the answer wrong. But what is happening with the other 23 students? What, you know, what's going on with them? What happens when, so everybody can probably answer that question easily, like, what is temperature, right? Students are going to raise their hand. They're going to say, oh, it's hot or cold. Fine. What if we dig a little deeper? So temperature is defined as the average motion of particles in a substance. What do you think this means? The second in a traditional slideshow that I ask that question, the room is going to shut down immediately. They're going to be like, ah, because I'm, there's a bunch of words in there that's kind of scary, like particles, right? Moving, motion, substance. What are you talking about? So right away, your engagement is going to go down. But here's the beauty of Perdeck. Perdeck is a question. So I've taken this slide and I've made it into a question slide. Now students are going to respond, and every student has to respond because I'm monitoring their, their participation. So every student now is going to respond, and now I know what every single student is thinking. So for example, this student here says, what do you think this, excuse me, the student here, first of all, I forgot to mention. You can have different options for how students respond. Going back to differentiation, in this particular slide, I allowed students to both respond through text and drawing so they can do one or the other, whichever modality works best for them. So in this particular slide, the student chose to do both. They made a little drawing that shows particles. It shows them moving. And then they said, I know particles in a substance move, but I don't know how that relates to temperature. So the second they finish that last word, temperature, and they put the period in there, I'm sending them the feedback. You can see the feedback on the right. I say, no worries. Show what you know about how a particle moves. Now I'm going to give them a little hint. How do you think they move if they're hot? If that substance is hot, what would that look like? If the substance is cold, what does that look like? And now I'm getting a little bit. Why I like it as a teacher? It transforms me. I'm not the person in the front of the room who's like, okay, this is what temperature is. What do you think of that? And now I'm trying to pull information out of people who don't want to risk. Now I'm on the side of the room, right? Now you can see this slide up here. This might be a bunch of different student responses. I can show these responses to the students. You will not, you'll see that it's anonymous. Their names aren't on it when we're in that screen. And now the students are constructing knowledge together, not with me, but with each other. It also tracks their participation in real time. So again, Lisa mentioned that we started this, this is new to me anyway, in 20, when COVID started. I taught synchronously. That meant that I had some of my students in front of me, but I had my students on Zoom call. How do we all participate together? We did this through this platform. They would be at home answering questions, and I'm tracking. It records every lesson and every response. That's what this lower slide here, this little picture is. So I can go back, and I can see, how do they do? I speak. Say you're doing an exit ticket just when you're leaving, right? Okay, let's get down that last little piece of meaning. So they're typing stuff in, the bell rings, it catches us. Okay, I can open up this slideshow tomorrow morning. We start at the bell, at that exit ticket. That exit ticket becomes the bell ringer. We start again. Everybody's who's already answered, maybe three of the 25 students have answered. Their answers are already there. Lastly, it's a platform that is so easy to use. It is easy to learn and use. It's intuitive, and it's just easy to use in terms of, you know, teachers learning. Here's where I would like you to try it. And I want you to try it because it's really going to be able to show you what they see versus what I see. So if you want to go to joinpd.com and type this in. You can go on your phone. And as you can see, this is what the students usually see when they come in my room and we're having a Perdeck. And I can see on the bottom left, the number of students who are already in. So before they even get into their seats, I already know where we're at. Before I switch the slide, I just want to make sure everyone who wants to be in is in before I move on and show you what I'm seeing. So this is what students are going to see. Okay, as they come in the room, there's the joint code. They actually make it a little like competition. You can get in first to the slideshow. I have nine students. Everybody in. I don't want to leave anyone out. Okay. So we're going to continue. So this is a stress check, and everybody's going to take their, there's like a little icon, and you can move it. So this is what students are seeing. I'm going to show you what I see. Oops, there it is. This is what I see. Okay, everybody's in a pretty good place, but I'm kind of worried about these students over here. These are the ones who are having problems. And as I hover over these purple lines, it tells me, oh, Lisa's having a really tough day.
Jill, can we do this after the discussion? Make change to where I move.
So from the teachers, now you're seeing this teacher view, right? This is not what students see. Now I know, okay, everyone's in a pretty good place, but I have a student who I probably need to talk to, right? Because that's where they're at. Let's try something a little different. Let's go back. And you notice on your screens, you're still on the stress check. You didn't see everyone. Yeah, you don't see anybody's response. Let's try a different one. Okay, let's try a science one. So our students are going to be learning about how water shapes the earth. So take a look at these two pictures on the right. Which pictures do you think are natural? Which ones might be human-made features? And then what evidence from your observations support your claim? You can put anything in there.
If you don't get this right, do we get a medial swoop and we get passed? Oh, we have the summer program that Dr. Scholz will be talking about.
Excellent.
So right now, Mrs. St. Peter is looking at all of our responses and giving some feedback. Okay, as I'm looking through, so first of all, let me show you what I'm seeing. Because Lisa, this year, so every year I'm learning a little bit more, she got me an iPad. On my iPad is all of your responses. So I am not tethered to my computer. I can literally walk around the entire room, and I can just, you know, be anywhere in the room, and I can see all of your responses. If someone is struggling, of course, I could go over and very quietly say something. But that's the beauty of this, is that you don't have to. I can send you anonymous information. There's no ding, there's no alert of any sort that will help you. Let me show you what this my screen looks like from a teacher's point of view. Okay, so this is what I'm seeing. These are all my responses. And I'm going to scroll through, and of course, you can imagine, you don't need to respond to every student because many students will be on the right track, right? But I went through and I saw some people had some, needed a little bit of help or a little bit of queuing. So here, this thought bubble is where I was able to respond. So I said, okay, good start here. You can give encouragement. And then maybe other people might have received something a little bit more. This one says a good start here. What, what evidence supports your claim, right? We did, I just need a little bit more. So you can imagine in the moment, this allows me to get in there and be that guy on the side.
How does one manage that when you have 26 responses to look at, right? Without disrupting the flow of the, because then you could have someone who's getting no response, just sitting there kind of waiting. How's that, how's that time perspective?
So the students kind of understand that not everybody gets a response every day at all. It's only, and they sometimes even write me a note. They'll be like, I'm not sure what to do here. And then I will go in and I will give them. They'll be like, I'm not sure what to do here. And then I will go in and I will give them a sentence starter, right? That's delivering those accommodations right here. So I can go in and you scroll through and you see people who are, you know, struggling. You can very quickly go through and get your hand put, and you're looking for maybe four people that you suspect. Maybe need a little bit more help, maybe you start with them and then look at some others, right? So you don't have to respond to everybody, but if I want to go back when the session's over today, how do they? You know, what are they thinking? I can go back and look at every single response. There's also the option to have a self-paced version. So right now she's controlling the pace of the, of each slide that we see. But you can also choose to make it a student line, so students can just go through. Right. And you do that, I mean, we get into the ins and outs, but there are three buttons on the bottom, right next to the end. If you click on those, it allows you to change it to a student pace, you can change it to student pace. I can show our responses, I can hide responses, I can lock the screen. Like if you're doing a formative assessment and I don't want you to change your answer because you see everybody else's answers, I can lock you. And then you can really know where you're at. Okay, let's hear from my beautiful students. They were so wonderful. They allowed me to, they wanted to participate. Let's see if I can get them started here.
What I like about Pair Deck is that we get to see the teacher's feedback.
What I like about Pair Deck is that there's anonymous answers.
What I like about Pair Deck is that it has a self-paced learning option, so you can work at your own speed.
What I like about Pair Deck is that you can choose your mood.
I like Pair Deck because it allows the teacher to review what we know and share everybody else's answers, so we can learn from each other's answers.
The reason I like Pair Deck is because when you would answer a question, when she shows you everyone else's question, you can learn from your mistakes and you can see different answers.
I like Pair Deck because when you answer a question, it's anonymous, and if you get it wrong, you're not singled out.
I like Pair Deck because when she sets it to student pace, I like going at my own speed.
I like Pair Deck because the teacher can show you examples of a question to learn the material better.
I like Pair Deck because your answers are anonymous. And this here is Carson emerging from the depths of the woods.
I like Pair Deck because you have multiple ways to respond, like drawing or tipping response.
And I'm just going to let you know for sure, they never saw this slideshow. All I did was say, hey, I'm going to bring this in front of the school committee. I really want the school committee to make sure that it, we have this every year. And they're like, okay. And then these are their points, not mine. Okay, questions?
Okay, Ms. Clary, any questions?
I don't think so. I was a little preoccupied also with how you would manage it. But it makes a lot of sense. With the inclusion and equity piece, that you would be spending more time with students that need more time and less time with students that have a stronger grasp of the information.
Right, yeah, that totally makes sense to me. You would not use this platform to respond individually to every student.
Right.
This is a quick formative assessment. Who needs my help? Who is struggling? And you never call them out. Like, let's say you go back to the other example, just using a traditional Google slideshow, right? And you ask somebody a question, how are they going to respond to you? There's two ways. They can raise their hand, only if people are comfortable doing that. Or they can write it on a piece of paper. How are you going to know when everyone's writing? You've still got to go around the room and figure out what everyone's writing. And then what happens if someone's struggling? Now you're hovering over the struggle.
And so this is, maybe a little bit of context would be helpful for me, like, how often is this tool used?
I use Pair Deck almost every day, and there's a few, I don't have questions that people have to answer every day. Did you notice how you can see it at your screen, right at your desk? Well, my room is pretty big. So the kids in the back of the room, the traditional Google slideshow, can't see what's on the screen very well. So this allows them to have everything up close and personal, whether I have them, like, answer a question or not. I use, like, I probably at least three to four days a week have questions. It's my bell ringer, it's my, my exit ticket. It's a formative assessment. You can have yes, no, you can have answers that are just, you know, you can poll, you don't, not everything has to be a written response. So I use it every day.
One of the great things about formative assessments, you know, it's such a powerful learning device that we, you know, really try to get. Teachers to put into place as much as possible. In some cases, the best teacher is the teacher who checks in formatively with their kids the most. I really believe that. So this just has such power in providing, Mrs. St. Peter and anyone who uses it with information. To adjust a lesson in the future, to help an individual student. It's tremendously powerful to see how students are tuning into a lesson, a lot of lessons, you could stop in the middle and do a pair deck. I just have to put a little plug in for Flipgrid, which you also saw there, which is a great way of students being able to film themselves. To show and to be able to place it into, you know, various presentations. It's, that's also a great tool. So these are emerging technologies that have come out in the last few years for us that we're using with fidelity through our district. So it's really impressive. So I just wanted to add a little, a little kick to your formative, you know, usage, because I just think that's so important.
Yeah, and I'm so glad that you're talking about that because you're exactly right. I may, you know, make a slide deck the day before. And then we may start with that first slide and I may realize, but we can skip to it in the moment. And I was telling Lisa when she asked me, hey, would you be interested to go in front of the school committee? I was like, absolutely. Because I consider this a game changer. I do not know how I could go backwards. I don't know another way to deliver the types of accommodations that you really do need to deliver. How else are you going to give someone a sentence starter? How else are you going to tell somebody, hey, go in a different direction? How else do you give accolades? So this is the thing that I see my students, how they're different. When they get started and they, they don't know where to go, and then, and then I go in there and I tell them, hey, you know, try this, and they get started and they continue to go. I see a difference in that. You can physically see somebody who's struggling now sitting up. Go back to that former Google slideshow where you're just asking questions. Okay, what do you think about temperature? The average particles in motion, what does that mean? There, you're going to lose at least a third of your students in that. I don't know how, honestly.
It's such a great reflection tool.
Yeah.
Your presentation is wonderful. It's very compelling. I love this. I apparently am way older than I thought and I can't comprehend that all these kids are sitting in front of their own screen at school, but like, I'm, I'm going to get there. I will get there. It's just like a lot, you know?
Yeah, but I would like to talk about, like, oh, kids just sitting in front of their whole screen. Remember, this can be two to three questions, and then you're starting something else. I'm a science teacher, it's hands-on.
Yeah.
You know, but you get to the end of what you ask them to do, some investigation, go back, that's your exit ticket. What did you learn? What do I need to do tomorrow, based on what you didn't get today, etc.?
Thanks, Clary. And I should just remind everyone, if you're, you know, at home, utilize it to any future to ask any questions, monitoring that. And if you're here, you have any questions, I've seen that the audience members were participating too, so you're welcome to ask some questions. Mr. Doc?
I think this is really neat. The one question is, is this viewed as an additional tool for teachers or a replacement tool or both? I guess, how do you incorporate that into your lesson planning? And then a related question is, as compared to what I would think of as traditional teaching, you know, you prepare, you write on a blackboard or a whiteboard, I mean, blackboard is. How, how does this compare as far as like teacher workload? Is it more efficient because you save time at the end? Or is it harder because you have to prepare this, this slide deck in advance, which you have deliberately, you wouldn't normally have to have? How does that compare in both those respects?
It saves you so much time. And the reason why is you take a Google slideshow, they don't take that long to do, right? And all you do is simply say which slides, not every slide, like this one isn't a slide that anyone's answering, right? So you customize which slides do I want someone to answer? How do I want them to answer? I can give them choices. Choose A, B, C, D. I can do a poll. I can do a drawing slide. I can do a text slide. I can drag and drop. When I drag and drop it onto a map. I can do all of that. And then it, it just saves you so much time because you know where, you know what you're thinking. And you know what everyone is thinking. Go back here to where we were. I know what every person is thinking. If I go back to this slide, let's go back to this one. There is no time off. Now, I would say, my students would tell you, that's probably the, the thing that they don't like. There's no time off in my classroom. You can't come in and sit in the back of the room and hope, you know, there's no time off. Because I can see everyone who has responded. And if you don't respond, there's, all your names are at the bottom, and I'll be like, why are you not responding? They don't even, no one ever not responds. If they don't respond, they're like, probably have a really bad, right? But a picture of this when you're trying to teach synchronously. The kids are at home, how do you know they're answering? They just turn the screen on, right? But I can see that they're answering. And when they don't answer, last year, I sent it home to the parents. They're like, okay, you know, they weren't, sorry, I did do that. They are, you know. They were on, but they didn't participate. Can you, you know, please make sure they're participating? You keep everybody in the same place at the same time. It's not more work at all, it's easier. I would actually add also that there are lots of templates for teachers. So Gail's obviously a superstar. And she talked about creating her own slides and then adding on Pair Deck. The Pair Deck itself has lesson templates, all of these drawings, polls, etc. She's not creating those like from scratch. They're part of the add-ons that Pair Deck comes with. So I think there's also a lot of time saving in actually making that jump, if you're new to Pair Deck.
It's interesting when you think of the use of this, and we, we talk a lot as faculty about the SAMR model, which, you know, is, is, it's a continuum. Where you have substitution, which is, you know, you get, this is a for writing, but I can also type on a, on a computer. Then you have various levels of augmentation, modification, redefinition. I'd say this is substitution in terms of being a formative tool. Now, what I mean by that is, you know, you can, you can check in on kids' progress by having them put their thumbs up, put their thumbs to the side, put their thumbs down, and then call on them. But where it's a game changer for me is engagement. And in the information that a teacher can gather to help out all the students. That's where I think it crawls into the definition for me as an educator. And I've seen this being put to use for that, because think about it. You know, you're, if you do thumbs up, thumbs to the side, thumbs down, unless you call on a kid, first of all, you really don't know. Right? Because I'm just putting my thumb up. That's why as a teacher, when I used to always do that, I'd say, I'd always call on someone with their thumb up. But then you get, then you get people who don't want to put their thumb up, put it aside, then you want to know more about it. This just gives you so much more information to determine what every kid in the room needs, and that's powerful. So that's just my.
And I notice like, it gives every student a voice. Even the majority of people don't want to raise their hand, they're not confident enough, they don't want to take that risk. But everybody can take risks because, as my students told you, no harm, no foul, it's anonymous. It's a safe zone, which is really nice, right?
Well, that, it's fantastic, and I'm very, very glad that we have it here for our students and not at my work.
Well, it lasted so well on the last session, the fractions. So, you know, you were bound to find something.
I mean, he doesn't even have supply ties.
Nope, can't be helped.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could do it.
Oh, yeah.
No, like, it's funny because sometimes he calls on us like for everything. I would like to.
Let's drop the Socratic method, start using Pair Deck.
Yeah.
I feel like I could have gotten more anonymous encouragement there rather than.
Dr. Sullivan, please implement the Pair Deck. I do have a lot of time. I also think that it's great. You're doing great. I think it's great too, because a lot of times we always ask the same question. And we see that we're all kind of on the same page, and that, it's kind of like, it's like, it gives you a little confidence, you know? To hear from one, you know, getting kids outside their comfort zone is awesome. I think that's, that's the thing. If they can do it without being embarrassed about it or trying to say something that they don't understand and really get any criticism, I think that's, this is great.
All right, thanks, Ms. Clary. I'm not calling you anymore.
Yeah. I'll type it in.
This is awesome. I, I've seen this done at a lower level, and I, it's really fun to see at the middle school level, because I feel like that is a place where the eagerness to participate has wings a little bit. I work with a bunch of younger kids, so everyone wants to share things all the time, not necessarily turn it into a lesson. I'm wondering how you're feeling about, so are you in year two or year three of Pair Deck? I'm in year two. Okay, and so I'm assuming you have like a library of Pair Deck slides from year one, right? Yeah, I do. Do you reuse them? Do you create new? What's your? I'm getting, like, so you both had questions about, okay, how easy is this to use? I, I make new slideshows all the time because I'm always teaching differently and exploring things. And it's so easy to customize. You just make a slideshow. And then all you do is you click on the Pair Deck sign, and then you click on the thing that says text answer. And the thing immediately becomes one of the answers that's a text. It's that simple. And then I did want to, one of the reasons why I did. I wanted to show you that this isn't just for little kids. So I first got introduced to Pair Deck several years ago from one of my students. One of my students said, hey, you should use Pair Deck. He's coming up, you know, I'm a sixth grade teacher coming up from the younger school, and he's like, why don't my teachers try it? It's really fun. I'm like, yeah. So then I kind of tried it, but I just was like, no, I thought like you did, like, no, it's going to be too hard. But then fast forward to COVID and it made it happen. Most of the time you think of Pair Deck like this. Oh, these types of slides, right? Yeah, that is not going to work in high school. These will work. And again, you, you don't have to make every slide like that. It's easy. It couldn't be easier. It records every single thing they say. You can go back and you like, a parent reaches out to you, ah, how is my student doing in terms of writing? Well, let's look at the beginning of the year, let's look at the end of the year. I can show you. I had a parent recently ask me that. I don't think my son really wants to participate in class that much, really. Here, I'm going to show you. Here's what they do. They write all the time. One time, the student I'm thinking of, his computer wasn't working, so he couldn't like answer on Pair Deck, but he wanted a piece of paper, so he could answer it. Can you search just by student rather than by presentation? So if you say like, oh, I call, say, how's my daughter doing? You can search up, she's not in sixth grade. Yeah. Allison St. Anthony, see all of her responses from different presentation, just to see that. That's a great question. That is a really great question that I don't know. I haven't like gone into the management piece enough to know. Yeah. I think that would be a really valuable way to look at a child, a growth and change. And obviously in different units, they would feel differently about something. No, I think it's a great tool. I think it's really exciting. I'm glad you're continuing to use it in this not post-COVID era. I don't know what era we're in.
Well, so if you think about it from just a perspective of a student reading something every day, analyzing something every day, responding and writing to that every day. Just as from a teaching perspective, that's, that's amazing. If you can get your kids to do that every day, then the class is worthwhile and meaningful.
And it's legible.
Well, that too. But those are the skills we, we have on a roster.
Yeah, engagement is something that's awesome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. St. Peter, for, first of all, for adapting to the remote hybrid models and finding a way to synchronizing gates with students. Will be, will be needed that. Hopefully won't be, but needed ever again in that way, but you never know. I harbored similar concerns to that of Mrs. Cleary in that, you know, I, whenever I'm walking around schools. With, with the docs, Dr. Sullivan and Doc Collins. I, I always sort of cringe when, you know, the students are in the classrooms and they're like, just watching a screen. Or they're all on their laptops, somehow using that, you know, technology has a place obviously in today's classroom. But there can be too much of it. I mean, that's why we have, you know, we want our great teachers instructing the kids, engaging with the kids, finding ways for, to make the kids collaborate with one another and engage on a, on a human level, you know? So I was worried until you said like, well, it's not like. Um, so I was worried until you said like, well, it's not like a full lesson. It's a, it's, it's more used as a, as a conversation starter or something of that nature, which is really awesome because then you're getting all the benefits you've talked about, right? And you're, you're ensuring that everyone's engaging and and participating, but also the students are actually getting more out of that because they're able to see, I love the feature when they're able to see what each other are sharing with, you know, what's coming out of their own perspectives because or, excuse me, other people's perspectives. Because um, like, that would help me if I was, if I hadn't even thought of that, right? Like, uh, you know, I like, I deliberately like made a very simple answer because I wanted to elicit response from you to see like how that worked. But then someone else was, said something about like, um, you know, well, I think the other one is is formed because, you know, from erosion or something like that. I hadn't known that. I was like, oh, that's that, I I can see that. I understand. Maybe something I I wouldn't have thought of it. And maybe that person was shy and they wouldn't have, you know, in a, in an older type of like learning solution or teaching model. Um, you would never have heard that answer, right? And it's just a very simple, obvious example that I'm using here. But I would have never benefited from that student's participation as a peer. Um, so I love that and um, and uh, do you ever um utilize like groups with this, like where they get together in groups and and like give like a group, like a team answer?
That's interesting. I haven't done that yet.
Okay.
But yeah, we could do that. Um, but you know, it could be used in that way for sure.
Sure, sure. No, I I think there's a lot of benefits to it. I was just, yeah, I was concerned about like the overuse of technology. But this is, I I think this is a great blending of technology in the classroom and incorporating that into a, you know, a more traditional engaging person-to-person model. So thank you so much for sharing. This is a really interesting presentation spotlight.
And I should add a, a thank you to Lisa.
Of course.
This is a perfect example of how Lisa, Lindsay, and then of course at our elementary school, Cassie, support our staff. Really nice collaboration and also Dr. Collins for, for working closely with us and do that. So we, this is what we want. We want more um time and uh, yeah.
Couldn't help myself.
No.
I have one question. Yeah, this was entirely teacher selected. Um, the St. Peter was part of a smaller team, middle school and high school staff at the end of twenty twenty-one that we looked at this application as something similar to what we call NearPod. We got premium trial licenses, some training and everybody tried it and then we came back together and said, this is the one we want to hear. And that was the one that trusted it. So entirely teacher.
So I have just one quick follow-up.
Of course.
So after you chose this, this application as a smaller teacher group and and left it and have obviously taken off with it, then are there other trainings? I feel like in the teacher world, sometimes it's so easy to become an island and you're so psyched about what you're doing and then you're just doing it in your own and having great success. But then how is it spread to other staff? How does that work?
We were talking, we talked about this often and.
The dispersion of.
Yeah, so something like this, you know, showcase to peers at staff meetings. Um, it's always great to share, be able to show. Um, but there also are a ton of self-paced videos, um, free webinars. There's a Paradek, the Pair Institute or Pair Academy um that's available to to teachers. So there's a lot of uh, uh, training and self-paced self-help training that's available to to staff to do in the role. But I think opportunities for staff to share with each other, there needs to be more of that. We had a casino day. It was a casino-themed PD day for middle school that Lindsay K and I had listed um, in October, I think it was. And it was kind of that point of, all right, we're saturated with new tech. Like, we get it, there's lots out there, so we're not going to show you or train you in something how to use it. Instead, here are a bunch of apps or applications, work in teams, try, figure out what a lesson might be in your class or subject matter together and share it with each other. And so they all put on like five, 10-minute presentations of what they created that day. The Paradek was one of those options. So um, so it it um, you know, I think there's definitely room for growth and greater adoption. But we have seen a, I think it was the number of presentations that students viewed in Paradek has tripled since twenty nineteen. So um, so we know that it has, you know, gone up, but I I would definitely like to see more sharing and showcasing of it.
Awesome. That's a good question.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Ms. St. Peter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That concludes our spotlight. So if we move on to our next item.
Sure.
Um, I'm going to share my screen. So as we, let me just move to the room. As we typically do about this time of year, we uh, we do talk about calendar. It's a, this is a common every year occurrence. What's different this year is that we are exploring the possibility, and I say possibility, of looking at a pre-Labor Day start. I think these are important conversations that communities need to have to make sure that a couple of things are happening, um, that we're maximizing the instruction for our students at times when our students are most attentive to the instruction. And also that we're really attending to the needs of our school community. So these, these are open discussions and I feel like my job as a superintendent, um, from time to time is to advocate for a particular model. But I very much recognize uh that these are community-based decisions. And um, I also should add that um, we are in the midst of negotiations with our Cohasset Teachers Association. So there are some details of the calendar that I will present that could definitely change based on those negotiations. But I thought it was absolutely necessary for me to talk about the calendar because of the pre-Labor Day sort of tense to it, to get that on the table.
And we've heard, we, I think everyone's heard the school committee talk about negotiations today in the past.
Yes.
With regards to other issues. This is actually their, their contract negotiation. So it's, that's something that happens every once in a while. Obviously, it's confusing because we were engaged in constant negotiations.
It was more bargaining, right?
Changing the work environment because of the pandemic, but now.
Yes. So you're either negotiating a contract that you, that you work with together, you know, collective bargaining agreement. Or if you're making a change, you bargain that change, which is what we were doing all along with our um, our pandemic necessities. So that's, that's really, that's a, that's a really, really well-taken point. So I put together some thoughts for us and I, we're really going to do, I'm going to ask that we do two things. One is that we look at the concept of Labor Day, uh, pre-Labor Day start and post-Labor Day start. And then we think about it over the next three years. And then we look specifically at our calendar for this year, knowing that there may be some tweaks that need to happen within that calendar regarding professional development days, half-days, whatever it may be, based on the final sort of disposition of that contact, contract negotiation. So here are some thoughts regarding uh, pre-Labor and post-Labor Day start for students. So the proposal, what I'm going to be talking about today for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five school years is for staff to return to work on the Monday and Tuesday of the week prior to Labor Day for professional development and building work. Remember, right now, our staff do that. They, they, it's certainly on a Wednesday, Thursday, but they, they come before Labor Day. With students returning to school on Wednesday and Thursday of that week, the week prior to Labor Day. In this proposal, there will be no school work for students and staff the Friday before Labor Day weekend, which would make for a four-day weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and of course, the Labor Day being Monday. So what I want to look at with that proposal on, on the table is some benefits of each model. And of course, uh, these are benefits that have been voiced to me and that, you know, I, that I believe in. But we're certainly open for, for input. That's why we're here, um, to add to these, these sort of points. But I thought it just would give us sort of a foundation from which we can have a conversation.
Can I just jump in for a second?
Absolutely.
So um, just to specify why you're talking about twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. That's obviously the, that's this cycle of the staff contract. So it makes sense to think forward through that entire cycle. Also, um, many um, families elected to share input with us via email prior to the meeting and did not necessarily want the comments read into the record. But you've incorporated some of the common themes we saw in a lot of these missives.
Well, they're, I mean, they're, they're all going to come out of there, right? But one of the common themes is notice. So what I'm trying to do by talking about the three years is if you do elect to um, think about Labor Day, a pre, a pre-Labor Day start, you, you obviously have the ability to determine when that would happen. But a three-year sort of swath here gives people some notice, particularly in terms of the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five year. But you know, you, you can define notice any way you wish, but that is a, that's just in my thinking. And it is, it is definitely uh influenced by, by comments that have been provided to me. So if I may, just talk about some of the benefits uh of a pre-Labor Days uh start for staff and students. And I'll talk about some of the benefits in terms of a post-Labor Day, which is what we've had, I believe, forever in class. Ever, ever gone, uh, pre-Labor Day. Am I correct in that?
As far as I, I literally thought it was a law that we couldn't start before Labor Day.
I'll, I'll get into that.
Not like legally, but growing up.
Right. No, yeah, you know, I get it. So some benefits of uh, pre-Labor Day start for staff and students. So clearly the main, when you look at our calendar, the main thing is to focus on the academics for the students and what it provides for students. So from an academic standpoint, a pre-Labor Days uh start provides two days for our staff to have an orientation time and then to immediately, without any break, implement those, that orientation to our students. And what it sets up is a week of orientation where we're really setting the plate socially, emotionally for a welcoming environment for our students, then kind of giving them a deep breath for a few days and absolutely hit the ground running the week that follows. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm going to advocate for this as the superintendent because I've seen it done very well. I, in a previous district I was in, and I, and I did both models at the district. I did both models as a teacher. I did both models as a principal. As a principal and an educator, I very much liked the pre-Labor Day start because I was able to make sure that I welcomed my students in a way that wasn't mingling those two needs, you know, heavy academics going, I was really, the pre-Labor Day start, I was really just getting them into the social, emotional environment that is so necessary. So that my big goal was that I wanted every student in my room at the end of that week to feel like I knew who they were and that we were a community of learners, that we knew each other and that I wanted them to go home and be very excited to come back on the following Tuesday to learn. And that was my sole goal and it was a very focused goal. Not that you can't do that in the, in the, in the current model, but it was very much more pronounced when you had this, this sort of week set for us. So that to me is um, is, is the major reason. Um, also, if you think about what happens in, if you start early, pre-Labor Day, it's that the time in June is obviously limited uh, in some ways from a teaching perspective. In other words, you don't teach as deep into June. With that in mind, you can do a lot more robust learning. I mean, our teachers are excellent. They're gonna, they're gonna push our students and our students are wonderful and our families are wonderful. So we're gonna, we're gonna get the most out of the situation, no matter when it is. I will say that. But from a, um, from an educational perspective, and Dr. Collins, feel free to jump in with this. You just do more robust teaching in September than you do in January. And that's just sort of a, a, a point that I think is, is pretty well understood. Um, safety training. Where we could really focus our safety training for our staff, which we do anyway. But we could really focus our professional development, safety training in those first two days and make sure that anything, nothing is lost in translation moving into the, the two days that will be the orientation like for students pre, pre-Labor Day. With no school taking place to Friday prior to Labor Day with the Monday, I, I, I'm very respectful of, of family trips and I do that myself with my own family. So I don't, I don't mean this in a negative way. Maybe it's not, you can't replicate it, but at least you do have a longer weekend to do some things with your family. Uh, and then of course, there, there's just the fact that, and I realize this particular year was a bit of a uh, an extreme because we did have that massive storm in October. But you know, winters can be harsh and we do have storms that are impacting us uh, or uh, I would say more extremely, oh, over the past few years. Uh, and particularly when we don't have the ability anymore at this point to create a remote learning scenario that was stopped by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We really do run the risk of running late into June. And right now, we are, we are at June thirtieth. And um, I should add that we're at the point now where if we do have another snow day, I'm going to have to send a waiver to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education just to allow, because we will not make the one hundred eighty days, just to allow us to stop on June thirtieth. They reserve the right to turn around and say, you know, Dr. Sullivan, you have to um, work with your community and take a day off for April break or figure out another way to um, get an extra day in there. So I just, I don't like that position from a leadership perspective and so that, that is definitely one of the reasons. Camps and various activities, I know this from my own, my own kids, typically begin during the last week of June. The, the, I, that's good. The idea here being that um, you know, it, sometimes you can miss out. If you have, we're going to June thirtieth, I wouldn't be surprised if there are some class of families who are missing out on some opportunities for camps and sleepover camps um, during that last week of June because we have school that week.
Or not attending school because they've already set up their camps.
Oh, we hope they wouldn't do that, but I do understand that that, that's a, that's a conflict, right?
It's a doubt.
Yeah. And I, and, and believe me, I'll get to the other side and there's, there's that conflict with, I'm sure some family trips on the other end, but. Um, and I should say that the Cohasset Teachers Association does endorse the pre-Labor Day start and they actually uh advocate for the formation that I've, I've created here um, as a, as the best educational model from an educational perspective. So that's that. Um, and to give a full scope of the benefits of keeping and there, there may be more out there, but keeping the current post-Labor Day start for staff and students is that there is a strong perspective that I've heard and that, you know, I totally understand that Labor Day does sort of wrap up the summer for kids. It's kind of a traditional model where, you know, you have those last few sort of days of summer that are really valuable for families. Let's look at it from a family perspective. Really valuable for families to enjoy that time. That's a beautiful time of year. I've had some of the best moments of my life with my family during those last days of the summer. So I get that too. Um, and the, the fact is that uh, it, it's, it's often a, a week that families scheduled to spend together for the holiday. Certainly, family vacations may have already been planned, maybe in the next years or maybe for this year. So I, that's a consideration that, you know, I, I know the committee is aware of and, and, and needs to, to think about in terms of decision-making. Starting pre-Labor Day could potentially impact student employment opportunities. Again, if in Cohasset, we're uh, sort of, we're, you know, a seaside town and we do have a summer industry here and a lot of our students have jobs within the town and their employer may expect them to go through Labor Day, but yet there, these are the older students, obviously. They're not able to do that because we're pulling them into school. That's a consideration. Um, weather may be more temperate in June than it is in, in late August. I, I guess it, it is more temperate in June than it is late August as a rule. That's a consideration. Um, some may feel at the start of school, pre-Labor Day, followed by a four-day break feels disjointed from a continuity of learning perspective. I, I, I do not have um, sort of believe that myself because I've seen it done. But I can totally get that and I can understand why someone would think that way and even someone who experienced it uh, from a, a pre-Labor Day scenario could feel that way. Um, it's just not my feeling as an educator. And I know the CTA has those feelings as well. With the late ending of school date this year, this summer may feel particularly brief with the pre-Labor Day start. I mean, think about it, we're ending June thirtieth, Labor Day is, you know, around the corner. So these are just considerations and, and I wanted to, I went a little deeper here just talking about what local towns currently are doing in terms of start dates for students and it's a mixed bag. You know, if, if this means something to you. A hall does have a pre-Labor Day start. And I also, I won't get into it, but those who have a pre-Labor Day start, no one is doing the exact same thing. Hall actually is doing what I'm advocating for in terms of the, the two days for teachers, then the two days for students and then Friday and the Monday off. But some of them, based on their uh, agreement with their association, can't do that. For instance, Marshfield only has the one day for their teachers at the beginning of the year. So they, they do something like they, the kids come back on, I mean, the teachers come back on Monday and then the kids would do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And they take Friday off. I believe Duckspree does Monday off, Monday for the, for the, sorry, Monday for the teachers. Maybe Monday, Tuesday for the teachers, but I know the kids definitely go back on Fri- the Wednesday. maybe Monday, Tuesday for the teachers, but I know the kids definitely go back on Fri- the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the kids are back at school, so they don't give their families that Friday off. So there's different incorporate, there's different sort of plans incorporated within the pre-labor day starts. And then you have the schools who are, which we're one of them, the school districts who right now have a post-labor day start, Hingham, Situate, Hanover and Noel. So it is a mixed bag on the South Shore in our area. Just so you have a sense of what the first day of school dates for students would be if we begin pre-labor day. And again, this is with my, what I've put together as a proposal. This coming year, you'll see on the calendar will be August 31st. This is for students. 23, 24 is August 30th and 24, 25 is August 28th. And then if we go post-labor day, it's September 6th, September 5th and September 3rd. Looking down here. And then I have some other thoughts regarding other possible calendar changes, which I think I should get on the table and then we could have a more robust discussion, unless you think you would like to talk more about the, the calendar in terms of pre, post-labor day, just as a single entity.
I agree. I think they can relate to.
I think they do. So. Because if I'm looking at this and I really believe in a post-labor day, then I want to know what are other alternatives they might be able to provide that could, you know, maybe not make us go as deep in June as we are going now, but yet still have a post-labor day start. So I think these do sort of connect. So here are some other possible ideas. And I just put it in the form of a question because this was posed to me and it was a good one. Is the reduction of professional, professional development days an option? Or can any professional development days be moved to occur prior to Labor Day? The short answer is yes, but the long answer is we have to work that through with our teachers association. And I'll just, a little more information, I'll just read this because it, it just kind of consolidates my thoughts on this. Currently, members of the Class of Teachers Association are covered through the teacher's contract. Who are covered through the teacher's contract are required to fulfill 184 days of work, 180 teaching days and four full days of professional development. With our current collective bargaining agreement, we would need to work with the CTA to determine if we could add two additional days pre-labor day for professional development. So that would be the only other way to keep that Labor Day and we'd have to work with them to do that. That would mean we'd be, we would have four days of professional development for the students arrive. And if that model would be the best for professional development, that's the question. You want it to be meaningful for our teachers so they can give meaningful instructions to our students. That, that's the key there. Another possible model would be to have two professional development days at the end of the year after students leave, as long as they take prior, take place prior until I want, because that is in our, in our current CTA. Now begs the question, are those two days at the end of the year meaningful for our teachers? Do they connect to the following year? Do they connect to anything we're doing whatsoever? And that would be a question that, you know, we'd certainly have to work through with them. And I'm not giving the answer because that's a collaboration that we need to have with our, with our teachers association. Once again, we would need to discuss this possibility with the CTA for the aforementioned reasons. We would need to ensure that we are offering professional development in the most effective manner possible. Currently, the full professional development days are the most effective professional development time we have. I don't really feel like there's much doubt about that. We do have some very productive and thanks to Dr. Stollins and the professional development team, embedded professional development happening. That's great, but it's still right now with everything we have on our plate from our strategic plan and all the work we're doing with analyzing data and creating a new literacy program, pre-K to six. I mean, now there's so much happening in the district that for me to stay, to sit here and say that our professional development days can go away and it wouldn't have an impact on us educationally, I wouldn't be accurate. I think those days are, are needed and necessary. Another idea, just to put it on the table, is we could potentially take a day off the back end of the calendar by creating a consistent process of making December 23rd a half day of school. And it might be a collective grown out there in the community, but I just want everyone to know, I've researched this and we haven't done this consistently as a school district. And it goes long before Dr. Stollins and I were here, just to give you sort of a, a, a rundown of how it's been handled in Cohasset Public Schools. This is December 23rd. 12, 13, it was a Sunday. 13 and 14, we closed schools. 14 and 15, we opened for a half day. 15 and 16, we were open for a full day. 16 and 17, we were open for a full day. 17, 18, it was a Saturday. 18, 19, it was a Sunday. 19 and 20, schools were closed. 20 and 21, this was the pandemic year, obviously. Schools were closed and last year's schools were closed. So it really, we really don't have, I mean, if you look back, a consistent method for this, I would advocate for a half day because it does provide students, you know, with, with some learning on that day and it also takes off from when I think learning isn't as effective, which should be keeping. So just, that's my, I'm advocating for that and it still gives a half day for travel and you do obviously have the whole Christmas Eve day. So you may feel differently, but I would advocate for that as something that we do consistently. But here's what I definitely advocate for. Whatever we do, we need to do it all the time. It needs to be consistent because families need to know what December 23rd is. Staff need to know what December 23rd is. As the superintendent and still kind of a new superintendent, there was a lot of confusion around this December 23rd. And you can see why, because 17, 18, 18, 19, it was over a weekend and then we hit the pandemic world and nobody knew which end was up anyway. And then la- this year, it was, what do we do, Dr. Sullivan? And I said, I don't know. Look at what, we do a lot of different things. So I chose what we had done most recently, put that into place. But I would, I would say it would definitely need to be consistent. And, you know, yeah, of course.
Question, if we have the half day, does that count towards our 180 days as a full day?
Yes. Half days do count as, as, and remember, we have a real healthy school day time. So we're not in danger of missing any time on learning in terms of the hours, but you, you are credited with a full day if you get, or you're, you're, you're credited with one of the 180 days if you do at least a half day. What are local towns doing in terms of December 23rd? This isn't surprising to you. They're kind of all over the place, right? So you have Hull has done a full day, but I just looked on their calendar and next year they're closing. And Hingham, full day, Situate's closed, Marshfield half day, Duxbury half day, Hanover full day, Noel full day.
Situate was the last minute negotiating.
Okay, I'm, I'm go, I'm only going by what's on the calendar and these are all, with the exception of Hull, this is what we did this year. Okay, so that's that. And then, you know, I'll end with this, but there, there certainly may be additional thoughts from the school committee regarding how we can adjust our current calendar to help with the potential late ending date, if that is the desire first, in the first place of the committee, if that's a concern for you. So I'm, I'm going to stop here, but I can come back to any of this. And Chair McClellan, I'll leave it to you to determine how we want to go about this. But what I've asked and what is on the agenda is a, is a vote for two things. One is a vote for a consideration of what I've put out there for a potential pre-labor day beginning for 2022, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. It doesn't have to be a package deal. You set the calendar, you have the privilege to do that. But I think we should look at those three years for notice purposes. And then we will look specifically at this year's calendar with the caveat that I'm, I'm guaranteeing that there's going to be probably some minor tweaks to those, or maybe major tweaks, but tweaks regardless to those half days. So I guess I'd start with, unless you want to do a different formation, discussion about pre-labor day and the consideration for those three school years.
Yeah, so the pre-labor day issue is first and urgent, so we'll just, we'll, we'll address that first. And I'm, I'm sure that most of the people watching the meeting want to talk about that anyway. So as a lot of times we do, we usually hear some community voice first, if everyone's on board with that, to get sort of a.
Can I ask one question for the community voice?
Yeah.
For those, just from my own perspective, what I'm interested in, and I don't want to get lost. There's kind of a couple of things going on, at least in my head. One is next year and others are the following years. So I want to make sure that if people are opposed to it, but just because they've had not, not enough notice and it impacts their plans for the next year, I'd be interested if they are just opposed to it in principle altogether or just because of the shortened summer this year and because of plans they may have made. I don't want to make a decision two and three years out based on community input. It's really only about this year. So that's just a request for the community if, if, if you have thoughts on specifically and in general, it would be very helpful for me.
Thank you, Stowe. No, I think that's a very good point. I will say, I think every single email I've gone on it did identify that issue. So that's good, good to raise that. It doesn't look like there are any questions on the Q and A. I know there are two audience members that may or may not have come for this issue. Okay, so if you guys, if you could just stand and state your name and your residential address, just so we have it for the record. It's not that we really want to know where you live, but.
Right, so my opinion. My name is LaShawna. I live at 6 Reservoir Road. My children are currently eighth and ninth grade age. And I've been in town since I was 75 and I'm, I'm also a graduate of Cohasset High School. So I pretty much know the history of the calendars. One of the questions that I did have was, can the date ever shift based on Labor Day? So this year it's on the 5th and as we go forward through these next three years, it's going to go earlier and earlier. So this year it would actually be, Labor Day falls on the 5th, it goes to the 4th, then it goes to the 2nd. By the time we're into the year 2025, it goes back to the 1st, which means that the kids would be back in school as early as August 27th, which really begs to the question, the temperature, there's not air conditioning. So you're obviously, like you were saying, you're looking at the time of year and it's going to be a lot warmer. And you were also mentioning the effectiveness of teaching, whether those days are pre-labor day or happening in June. And if you're at the end of August, is it really that effective? I have family members that live in other towns and it's pretty much like you said, it's all over the place. In general, what I hear from other family members and friends that have kids that go back before Labor Day is, we're not getting anything out of it. We're checking the box. So is it more effective to have those days where you're checking the box and meeting the 180 before Labor Day versus in June? And if you look at the calendar right now, we're not looking at, we're at September 7th and we're looking at that extra week and the kids are only going to be going back to school maybe September 4th, September 5th. We're looking at making that commitment going forward. And the question that you were saying, is it just this summer? Well, yes, I've also been hearing some, some of the kids as well, especially where they've been going through so much in the past two years. Now they feel like, oh, now we're in June 30th, we're going to have no summer. I'm so stressed out. I'm going to be back at school before you know it. And now they're hearing that they may be back in school actually in August. And that's like such a dirty word to kids that are actually in school, especially in this time where they're so used to having that consistency of knowing that they have through Labor Day. So that's my question is really, right now, you're going to be backing it up earlier and earlier and earlier for the next three years. Are those days really effective? Does it really benefit the kids to be back in school and checking the box in August versus a couple of days in June, which based on the weather, you still don't know if we're going to be running late? This year, we know that we're running until June 30th. Next year, we don't know that. So is it possible to revisit this discussion this time next year, next March, when perhaps we don't have as many weather days and then we could implement it and see what the community, how they feel about it? Right now, where the kids are already committed to getting out so late, is it the best possible scenario of putting them back in school before Labor Day starting this year?
Can I give a quick comment to this?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate where it's your recommendation that Dr. Stollins sort of responds to some of the questions.
No, thank you. Good, good, very good points.
Nothing. I was just correcting the person. You said Dr. Stollins, it's Dr. Sullivan.
I said him and Dr. Stollins.
Okay, great.
But thank you for that, Sam.
Now we run the risk of losing my train of thought. I'm holding back. So you did, you did that.
I lost a file because some things weren't plugged in.
So I just wanted, but first of all, I guess the question about, and I, I thought about this, about the earlier Labor Day gets, the more, the less meaningful it might be. And I started looking at contracts that have that wording. And I did find this from, I think this is Marshfield, but they have, and this is something we'd have to talk to our CTA about. But what they have is if Labor Day falls on September 3rd or earlier, teacher's work year will start on the Tuesday after Labor Day. If the Labor Day falls on September 4th or later, teacher's work year will start the Monday before Labor Day with the Friday before Labor Day, no school. So that kind of sets the pattern for the students as well.
Nine, three, teachers, everyone starts after nine.
Yes. If Labor Day falls on September 3rd or earlier, teacher's work year will start on the Tuesday after Labor Day. If Labor Day falls on September 4th or later, teacher's work year starts the Monday before Labor Day with the Friday before Labor Day is no school.
It's an answer to exactly one of the issues.
So, so I, because I think it's a very thoughtful question. I also, I'm just going to try to remember the second part. The second part was about. Can you just remind me of the second part? Was that pretty much the answer to your question?
That answered my question as to whether or not we can shift the date because we, we potentially are looking at on 2025, it falls on the 1st.
Yeah.
So you would be having the kids in August 27th.
And, and you also talked about the, the days in June versus the days in August and what that means to students. But my, as I presented in my brief overview there, I mean, my, my real concern is that we really didn't have a, that stormy of a year this year. We had five days. There were, if you look back at 2015, 16, I mean, there were, there were weeks of missing. So I'm very concerned with those massive winters where we have very little wiggle room if we start post-labor day to consider not hitting that, that breaking point. And I just don't know what the state is going to do with that. And I, I do totally acknowledge that this was a strange winter because we had that October storm. But if you think of the totality of the winter, it really wasn't that extreme unless we had an April 1st storm, which is totally possible. We had that 26 inches of snow, April 1st. I don't know, it was some time ago, but I'm getting myself a little bit, but I, I remember like the other day. So these things happen. But I, I understand that. And I, I think with all things being equal, I get your point.
I'm just curious, how, do you know how many years it's actually happened? Where would the school calendar potentially be pushed back past June 30th?
I don't know that. I guess, I, I do know that, as I think someone mentioned or I will mention, we did acknowledge Rosh Hashanah this particular year. There was the start of it, we pushed it. And then we had the, so this is, I, I, I would admit it, kind of an extreme year for, for that. What is June 30th quickly?
It's, it's not, it's the 25th, 26, 27.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because last year. Well, last year, I was approached because of the importance of the religious holiday, particularly from what I was told by some rabbis in the area, the first day of Rosh Hashanah, which happened to fall on what we had set as our first day of school. Right, so we, we, we actually went a day after. We had some, right, yeah. Yeah, I was going to bring that up. I, I can do some research on that. I haven't, I haven't.
I just, I know that in, in my memory, I mean, and I graduated in the eighties. I, I can't seem to remember a time that it was even up to debate, what do you do? Because now we're stuck at June 30th. So for the very few times that it's happened, we're talking about making a major shift going forward and continuing.
I hear, I hear that from a waiver standpoint. I guess I just also think about, you know, when you're going late into June, particularly that last week of June, what is the quality of education? But I, I balance that out with your thought about the kids coming back in August. I mean, these are, this is why we're all over the place, right? I mean, there, there, there are good points from both sides there. I, I guess I just, I, I would advocate for the newness of a year when you're coming off of a break to have it be a productive learning moment as opposed to the end of the year where everyone is tired, worn down and ready for a break. But point taken and certainly, you know, I'm obviously advocating for something, but I'm not blind to the fact that these are great points.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
My name's Erin O'Duggan. I live on Grapefruit Trail.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. And I have a seventh grader and a ninth grader. I also happen to be a speech language philosopher in the town of Hull. So I have experience with going back pre-labor day for 10 years now. And I have to say that we, you know, I, I look at the calendar and I definitely do that like, you know, every August. But then I go and I'm always grateful that we do it. I'm always glad we start pre-labor day. What I see and I think parents, because we're, you know, as parents who are not in school and I heard what you said about, you know, parents going, oh, we're just checking the box or whatever. But those are parents who aren't actually present in school, seeing what their kids are doing and what teachers are doing, the efforts that teachers are making. In Hull, we have a, we don't have a bring your own device. We provide devices. So those devices are collected at the end of the year and given to students in those. So those devices are collected at the end of the year and given to students in those first two days. All the passwords are handed out, all the contracts are signed about your behavior and, you know, how you're going to treat your iPad. All of the logistics are taken care of in those first two weeks, plus social emotional type stuff. Making a welcoming, you know, environment, kind of getting, the way I look at it is like you get all that out of the way. You have a nice long weekend and you come back and you're ready to get started. And you're ready, you don't have to do the passwords and this signing the, you know, permission, they're signing the whatever contracts and all of that, it's all done. You're ready to go and you're like, you're, you're actually, I feel like it's more productive to do it that way. So that's just me, that's speaking from experience. I do feel like this, you know, to, to address your question about just this year or following years, as much as I would love to start and am here to advocate to start pre-Labor Day even this coming year, I think it's going to be a bummer, a summer for kids. For sure. Like there's, you know, there's no way around that. They're all, my kids told me not to come here tonight. You know, and say that because they already can't believe they're going until June thirtieth. It's interfering with plans of ours. That brings me to one of my points is that I know the South Shore, a lot of people don't do it and, and you can find your local friends to hang out with or whatever. But for those of us that have family and friends around the country, New England is just very rare in starting post-Labor Day. I mean, I have friends that are principals in Colorado and they're out in May. May. Yeah, my, exactly. And I have friends, I have family in California, they're out early June. We now can't make plans with them to get together. Also, having older kids, I'm looking at a student that's trying to get a job this summer. I, I guess you can see it on either end with the jobs, like do you end earlier, do you start late? But for example, we are seaside communities, there are sailing programs that these kids are instructing on that start the same week as the last week of school. So not only are, you know, like you mentioned with camps, are parents paying for a sailing program, but there are also, there are some kids that are hired to be sailing instructors for a program that they, you know, they can't be there the first week, so there's that to consider. I don't know if it's just my memory, I, I don't, I feel like, even though, Dr. Sullivan, you said that the winters haven't, you know, this winter hasn't been so bad. I feel like our falls have been crazy and those windstorms, like we're, you know, we're calling things snow days, but we have wind days.
Five years, my fifth year in the district. And my first year, we missed two days at the elementary schools for a windstorm. Of course, we have the.
Right.
The windstorm and all the storms.
I know. You know, the town's going to put all the power lines underground.
Yeah, we had some shaky day, a few weeks ago, if you remember with the wind, just the wind. But, do we need to drop here?
That's okay. I just want to make sure I'm covering all my points. Also, just, you know, the general, so, so whether I really am thinking more about fall than winter and the wind that we're getting, it seems to be disruptive. And we need to take that into consideration. And then also, there's just that feeling. In August, you know, people are kind of coming back, even if they go away for four days over Labor Day, there is that sense of like, you're winding it down, how many more days can you spend in the sun and beach? You know, you're kind of ready to come back, ready to go to work. Whereas in June, you're like bursting at the seams to get out, get to the beach, get, you know, fresh air, not in school anymore. So that's just the way, you know, the way that I see it. And I think that's everything, yeah. But I did, I really wanted to make the point of people around the country too, because that's, you know, most of the country does not follow the same schedule. And it really does impact any type of friends, family, anything beyond local, which sadly, you know, my family's not local anymore, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. O'Duggan.
Do you have a couple of comments?
Oh, we do.
Can you see?
Oh, good, all right. I was getting concerned that we weren't getting it because we moved the meeting and I was sure people would have things to say.
First in-person comments, how do you all?
Thank you both very much for being here.
Yes, really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
There are three comments from Jacob Harrow from eleven Walnut Hill Lane. So that means that that will be the allotment, but I'll just read them all in a row. This topic has taken us by surprise. To start, this should be a discussion for years twenty-three, twenty-four and forward, given many families already made plans for the current summer. Despite the various points of support offered, this proposal seems largely unprompted, unnecessary, and unlikely to have any material impact on the quality of education afforded to our children. We've never experienced any negative impact stemming from a post-Labor Day school start. As a parent, our teachers have always appeared well-prepared and ready to receive students on day one. Our family values the ability to take the last days of summer to regroup from busy summer activities, refocus, and make a few meaningful family memories. Interrupting the week before Labor Day, two days of limited, if any, substantive instruction followed by a four-day weekend is disruptive. We are not in favor of sacrificing valuable and ever-shrinking quality time at the tail end of summer for a more gentle, multi-day orientation. We also have no issue with instruction continuing deep into June, even as necessary to accommodate for snow days. I appreciate the administration seeking changes that can improve the quality of our children's education, but sometimes it's okay to leave well enough alone.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Anything else? Okay. All right, so we'll begin school committee deliberation on it right now and discussion, and if we see things pop up, we can go back to it. Just clear, do you have any thoughts on this issue?
Yes. I think, yeah. I don't know. I kind of feel like it's like you either hate getting up in the morning or you hate going to bed at night, you know what I mean? I'm a person, I don't know. It's like, you have to go to school this many days, like, summer ends, we live in the Northeast, it's an unfortunate truth that the seasons change, or fortunate, depending on what your perspective is, right? Summer ends, fall begins, and I personally am already completely exhausted. And that is a personal thing. I know not everyone is experiencing this year the way I am. But our family, like, literally, I like crawled into February vacation. Like, we are exhausted. And to me, the end of the school year, honestly, bless you all, cannot come soon enough. And it's not coming anytime soon. So for me, starting a couple of days earlier with the promise of an earlier summer appeals to me more. Again, bedtime, waking up, my kids able to bed. It's like you have, like, there, there just are that many dates, right? And I'm, I think I can totally appreciate why some families are not in favor of this because they've already made plans. And I can say that we have not made the usual plans that we make because the prices are so crazy this year. So I get it that some people have made significant investments in their summer plans this year. So I do feel for that. So I can see, I am in principle, very much in favor of this. I also, I'm on the high school, school council, I'm the school committee representative to the high school school council, and there are a lot of students on that council, which is awesome. And one of the things that I hear them say a lot, and this is just like sort of a detail, but one of the things I hear them say a lot is that they feel like they, they would like to have more meaningful connections with their teachers. Their teachers are good teachers, but they feel like more meaningful connections would be a good thing. And maybe not starting the school year with like intense academic rigor day one would help to alleviate some of that and help to repair some of that. I don't know. That just came up for me when we were talking about that the beginning of the school year would be a time when students and teachers can sort of get used to each other and get to know each other instead of diving into the syllabus, you know? So, thanks, that's it. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, just all right. Just keep an eye on those comments so that we can go back if we need to. Mr. Dial?
I don't like getting up early. I like saying that's not the issue for the committee. Just thought I'd have a record. But that issue for the committee is, is an important one. What, what I am responding to as a parent and what I, why this is important is because it is, I think going to June thirtieth is, is too much. I think that's, you know, and maybe, you know, like, Mr. Harrow, he has no issue with going with deep into June. I hear from a lot of people who do. And so I think it's good for us to talk about this. And I do encourage anyone of the forty little humans I see in the bottom corner of that screen, if you have views, please type them into the Q and A, because we do want to hear from you. But where I, where I sit on this is, is number one, this year, I think the kids have been through a lot. I don't want to take away their summer. So I am not in favor of changing for this year. That being said, I am in favor of generally the idea of starting before Labor Day, where it's appropriate. I love this idea that Marshfield had, nine-three before, start after Labor Day, if it's nine-four after, start before Labor Day. I think that's the best of both worlds. That gives you, that, that kind of gives you a buffer away from this situation where we're going to be pushing up against the June thirtieth, where we may have to seek a waiver from, from, from Desi and take away a random Saturday or take away from another piece of vacation. So that seems to be a very attractive idea for me on, not fall, not next year, but the, the two years after. I do think it is a bit too short of a notice for this year, given the impacts on the community to, to make the change. And I think that's pretty much where I, where I sit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial. Gary?
Yes, thank you. Look, I think there's some good arguments for both, both sides of it. I came into this as a parent of three kids in school. There's a lot of things to consider. I do agree with Dr. Sullivan's recommendations. I think that what, what got me was the, the teachers. You know, the first thing I would ask is, what do the teachers think of the education part of this? And they seem to think it's better to commute early. So that said, not only that, but we talked about, we talked about like orientation, it's so important. And these kids aren't getting it. They don't know where the lockers are, they don't know where, no, they need to know the, the time with their teacher and get, get that chance to get up and get ready to go on Monday, ready to roll. So they're going to get that Friday off, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's just a lot to, to, to ask people to come in for two extra days on the educational part of it, because that's why we're here. Also too, it's the last two days. I mean, I've seen it for what my kids did, they're watching movies in June. And it's fine. I, I just think that on an educational standpoint, I think it's a better idea to start it later. I do like the idea to start it with what Marshfield's saying, but this year, if we're going to start safe. So what are we looking at prior to this, the seventh or so?
So this year, you mean in terms of when the day is?
Yeah. Yeah, that's too late. Six is.
This year's the sixth. If we start post-Labor Day for students, the first day would be the sixth this year, the fifth, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the third, twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's too late. I, I would think that, I do like, as, as was pointed out, that in the, in the next couple of years, it's going to be different, so we can roll that. This year, I just think that I would vote to come back for Labor Day. And I think it's, I think it's best for the students. Again, as far as families go with these holidays, it's like you could either plan a June vacation or, and also we have the beach and you can go on weekends in September, it's beautiful, it's sandy beach. And now it's, we're, we're in a blessed area, so like we, we continue with the summer. I'm worried about the AC in the school too. I'm worried about like, is it too hot in June? I mean, we've seen them, we do have heating and air conditioning problems in the school. So I just think that if we start earlier, then it gives us some kind of flexibility that we could leave later. So I would be in favor of Dr. Sullivan's recommendations, not only because of Dr. Sullivan's organization, because of the teachers as well. I believe that the education is the most important aspect. And I'm sorry if I offended any families on the occasion. I just think the education is the most important.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Ms. Anne O'Gorman?
Thank you. I think that great points are being made on both sides. And I, like you, Erin, I teach and have to go back for Labor Day. And I actually find a lot of value in a taper start, having two days and then four days, and then really in your third week of school, having five days, I think is a really nice way to build endurance and, and re-acclimate to school. I always feel like I have jet lag and my kids have jet lag at the beginning of the school year when you have to dive in. I mean, I also feel like that after our winter break, when, when we don't have a long weekend after New Year's, I think, oh my God, five days, madness. So I think it's nice to start small and, and relearn how to sit in a class all day and be at school. That being said, I think that, I think there's also some value in relooking at our, our one hundred and eighty days. So, so just looking at the calendar. I'm curious.
Are you looking at the proposed?
The proposed calendar that you shared with us. I'm curious, keeping in mind all of the days that are existing already. If, so there are really only two days that we would have to be kind of playing with right now, right? Because it's, so to get a hundred and eighty school days, there are only two of those prior to Labor Day.
Right now, they're.
In the proposed calendar.
Correct.
So I'm curious, where can we find those days? And make them happen at a different time, so we don't have to go back in August? And here's my question. And I'm also saying this as a person who truly loves days off, because I do a job and I love a break from a job, right? Even though I love my job. Looking at the calendar, I'm curious, and I think that the note you made about professional, professional days may answer part of mine. But I'm curious about a couple of things. In March next year, much like this year, there's a half-day PD on the sixteenth and then a full-day PD on the seventeenth.
Proposed.
Right, right, right. All of this is proposed. Assume that proposed is something for all of my clients. Is it possible to shift the seventeenth to a half-day so that we can count it as a school day and still get professional development in that day?
So, want me to answer that one?
Sure, yeah.
So the issue is that the teachers have a hundred and eighty.
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Days. So that, and then they have to, a hundred and eighty of them have to be with students.
Right.
So that, that means you just took away one of the required days for the staff to, which they get paid for.
Yeah, of course.
To be here. So that, that would be.
Because it becomes a student day.
Negotiation that we have with them, because it's reducing their year.
But it's increasing the school, the children's time.
Well, it is, but.
So that, I guess, comes into the, can we flip-flop PD days and can that be used during one of the days, the Tuesday or Wednesday? When, oh, sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, that are proposed to return August thirty-first and September first. Like, could that be used for full-day professional development time in lieu of a starting date? Just curious, I just feel like this is a first offer, so I'm here at the negotiating table.
Are you talking about three days of professional development, like the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, like could it, and a switcheroo happen first, or you think? No, no, what I'm looking at for this year is how can we work it so that the kids can go back on the sixth? Because I think it is. I need.
You said the sixth. After Labor Day.
Yeah, I'm saying, how can we still make this work, finding days in the school year to have the children start on September sixth this year and on June fifteenth without weather, which obviously isn't going to happen because we live in New England. But like, everyone in New England is also dealing with the issue that you have to book summer in October. So like, my kids are going to camp, people have houses they're going to, you're going on trips, it's all, it's all booked, it's all happening. And kids, you know, school can happen, but let's also make it so that people are going to be here at school, right? So I'm just curious if that full-day PD time can be tacked on on an August date or a September first date to buy that time, that's to fulfill that one eighty-four. I'm also curious, I'm also curious if Good Friday is negotiable, because if you look at the calendar, like, yes, I understand that we bumped out our starting date because of Rosh Chana, because that's a starting date of school. But in general, religious holidays do not dictate our public school calendar. And again, I love a day off, but if you look at the calendar, I feel like it's weird that the only religious things that are mentioned are in April, and we see Passover begins at sundown on April fifth, and Good Friday, Friday is on, um, April seventh. If we could pull Good Friday and tack on a summer day, and then people who want to take the day to observe Good Friday can submit a note and have an excused absence, or frankly, just go on vacation and be absent, like, you do you, school's happening. I just feel like there is some room that we can play with to keep the ending date, the initial proposed ending date without snow days as June fifteenth half day and fill in that time on the August thirty-first and first day for this year. In the future, I think that that Marshfield language is terrific, and I think there is great value, like I said, in the tapered beginning, but I just think that we need to be creative in looking at our calendar and give a a full summer. I mean, we are literally ending so that we're only getting July and August. And I feel like if summer is less than July and August, it was really hard to start this school year for a lot of teachers and families and kids. I think we want to start with a, uh, a well-rested community who feels like they got their summer, who doesn't have to choose between camp and vacation and family time and school, and who can plan ahead so that when everyone's booking stuff for the following year, they know it, they know what's happening. But I just think that we need to get a little creative to to kind of borrow those days and and place them elsewhere.
Even in, I mean, we've got the fifteen, we could just let it go to the sixteen. And so if the Good Friday goes away, instead of ending on the fifteen, even sixty, you still get
Yeah, so like, if we can't, if we can't move that full day PD day, if we can't move that, but we take a Good Friday and go half day on the sixteenth? Sure, sure.
Couple, couple of, um, just thoughts today. One thing we want to make sure that we do is make sure that the PD is quality.
Right.
And that we can provide it, so that the benefit, just to play devil's advocate of, and you know this, because you're a teacher, but the benefit of having a professional development during the year is it sets a a marker for when you can do PD, when you can do a touch base with the whole staff on a particular issue.
Totally.
It's not all front loaded, because remember at the beginning of the year, you know, speaking as a as a teacher many years, I want to get my room ready. I want my room ready, I want to, I want to be with my my building and my building principal and get to know that. And the having, that is the focus. I mean, no matter how we slice it, it does mute a little bit of the professional development aspect at the beginning of the year, certainly at the end of the year. But it mutes it a little bit at the beginning of the year, whereas if you have it strategically placed within the year, it kind of invigorates that professional development model. The other thing is, I I think we just, and let me just, if I'm hearing your proposal, though, your proposal is that because of lack of notice, short or perceived, maybe someone could perceive lack of notice, and the idea of a, um, shorter summer, the tallest taking our kids, that for this particular year, we look at the potential of using those two days that I had said would happen for students pre-Labor Day and fixing that up to be the professional development days for this year. And then moving forward, looking at kind of the Marshfield language, and again, I'm just going to say it for all those CTA members who are we do, we'll talk this over, but
Of course.
The idea is, like, this is the proposal that you're advocating for, is that, it is what I just mentioned for this year, and then the Marshall language
Yeah.
Going forward.
Taking this as a separate thought, separate calendar thought, I think, yeah, going forward, I think it makes a lot of sense to establish language and to have patterns that we can rely on, such as the December twenty-third decision, such as a a cutoff around Labor Day. That makes a lot of sense, so that people don't even have to wait for our March thrilling school committee meeting about calendars to say, oh, I know what I can do, because I want to go see my grandmother for Christmas, or I want to see my cousins in California who have been out for a month and a half in June. You know, like, people should be able to anticipate the formula of the year.
If I'm correct, that would actually end the school year on June ninth.
Sweet. Let's do it. Like, we're practically private school, because you're moving the four days ahead.
But you were asking for three days.
I'll take, I'll take, that's what I just got, but I, um,
How did we get to June ninth?
I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, I want to have a complete conversation about where we can find time. Because in this proposal, students are starting August thirty-first, going to school on the first as well, taking a four-day weekend, and then coming back on the sixth. I feel it feels more appropriate and and responsive to many in the community if we have the students start on the sixth and then find time elsewhere in the calendar.
For this next year.
For this coming school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, like, pull a Good Friday or rearrange a professional development day so we can still end
Well, I pulled Good Friday in that model, so if you pulled Good Friday, that's all I got for the night. You you see what I mean? So just to put it, just to put it from a numbers for stylization, but you want to do it. And I, we also have to talk this, but the fifteenth is when the end of the school year is. Now, with the with the professional development days, two of them embedded in the year, take those out, those are school days.
Oh, but we have to keep the full day PD days, right? But if we put them at the beginning of the year, and I don't want No, I'm not either. I'm not either, and I think that if we need to negotiate differently to make our PD meaningful, people are not having time in a classroom at the beginning of the year is insane. That is stressful. We need teachers to feel ready and be ready. So if having the PD there, PD there isn't appropriate and keeping that one full day after the half day in March, but we can shift a Good Friday and then maybe even end on the sixteenth, like, if it's a one-day shift, which I get it, like, if there's one snow day, then you're bumping into the next week.
Well, if you did take Good Friday and you did the, and you did an extra, then it would bring it to the, I believe, the twelfth, maybe the last.
Yeah, I just think that we need to be creative for this year and then set up a formula for future years and then make it work.
Yeah, I'm just, all I'm doing is just
Totally.
It's extrapolating what they're saying. I'm not saying that's what we should do or anything.
How do you, how do you get the, so I'm looking at your calendar, it says the, looking at this
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
But if we bumped it, it would be the nineteenth. If they start after Labor Day, they actually get the nineteen, on, without removing any of the Good Friday.
Right, and which you can't start
No, I know, I just, I know, I'm at that.
Oh, because, because you add the two days.
You add the two days, and so now we're going to go, right? So that's okay, but if you do that
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay, so if you take off Good Friday, the nineteenth, if you take, and we add the twenty-third as a day, that's the sixteenth, so it gets us back to the fifteenth. Without
Not in here?
Correct.
The twenty-third is marked as a half day here.
Right, so it's a day. So it's already in here, okay. So then that would mean that would be the sixteenth would be the last day.
I don't think I, so wait a minute.
Right?
So those two days, we have two professional development days that are not counted as the hard days, and they would be counted as you should take them away.
Well, I think we're
You're adding a day there, so maybe I didn't think of this ahead of time, of course, but what we're looking at is March seventeenth and October the seventh.
Right.
If we did those before the year starts, those become school days, which means our last day is backed up.
Well, yeah, I was really, I was really only You're starting after Labor Day, so you're adding those two days.
Oh, yeah.
So it's the same, right?
I was just, when I was looking
Sorry about that.
Looking at the calendar today.
So it doesn't really help us for days, the days from the end of the calendar.
No, but it helps us from days from the beginning, right?
Helps for days.
Yeah, what we have is only priority right now.
I was, I was, I I took away days when I shouldn't take away.
It's actually not, I have two priorities. Pull the thirty-first and first, keep the fifteenth, get creative in the middle, so we can make that work.
I hear what you're saying, I apologize.
That's my, right.
I gave everybody all kinds of hope, and I'm wrong.
I I would, I I think that's fine to be able to do that, but there's no way that I'm going to vote for getting rid of Good Friday. As you get, Christmas is on Sunday this year. It's 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 been, I think, would be the only school in the country that's that's actually here. So I would, no way, you can find a way anywhere, but it better not be Good Friday. No, I could not vote for that.
That's your prerogative.
No, I'm just, exactly.
They actually love school to go to school on Good Friday, you know, where I have
Can I just do a clarification, just just, because we talked a little bit about the the original notice, so setting aside the, let's not touch the personal not touch them at all. If we did, and said, you know, theoretically, found another day, maybe it's Good Friday, maybe it's a different day. But if we found Good Friday, then we could still start on the sixth after Labor Day for next year. And that would put our technical end date at the sixteenth, assuming no snow days.
That's correct.
So sixteenth, that's, that's pretty good. Now, if you add five snow days to that, that actually puts you to the twenty-sixth, because the nineteenth is a holiday. So you're you're still having a reasonable buffer from that June thirty, which is, which is what my goal is here.
And you start after
And you start after Labor Day, and then going forward, now that people have tons of notice, you could have a world where we look at that Marshfield schedule and say, if Labor Day is early, we do one thing, Labor is late, we do another thing. And then that makes makes sense. I just want to make sure I had the math right, is that, is that correct?
Well, I had the math wrong. You had the math.
Well, I I I'm good at fractions, but dates totally different.
That's, it's pretty confusing. And I think we've done a good job probably making it even more confusing, but I know that there's, um, some community comments, um, that have been, wait, I know Mrs. O'Duggan also wants to make comments, so we'll, um, go to you first. Your second comment, by the way.
Okay, yes, it's super, just along the lines of getting creative, I was reminded that there was a year, I don't remember what year it was, that there was a lot of snow and all, um, in order to not go past June thirtieth, we did two Saturday, half-day Saturdays in March. It was terrible, but March is terrible anyway, as we all know. And it did get us out early, so it was, it was a creative solution. I don't know if Desi still does it, honestly, it was probably at least five years ago, not longer, so I have no idea if it's
Personally, I don't, I like the rhythm of the year, the weekends, give a break to the kids. I mean, I just think that'll be an extreme circumstance personally, but I could be
It was an extreme, it was history.
But it also would be an alternative if we did have two weeks.
Well, that might be something that we would have.
We all agree that we can start the latest start time.
Just worried about your attendance on those.
Okay.
So can you read those comments?
Ben Newell, eleven St. Quro. Do the PD days need to be full days off during the school year? Many districts use the first Tuesday or Wednesday each month for PD, often confused with the amount of time off my children have during the school year. All of the full PD days and early releases plus snow days off causes inconsistency in learning and routine. If there's a way to move PD days to the first two days before the students start and change a couple of PDs to early release days rather than full days off, could that improve the late end calendar date? I think you should start moving the date earlier to start nine-one, but reconsider this upcoming summer to start so early. First, look at the change, at changing the placement of PD days and then tweak the start date for twenty-three.
I think we just talked I guess.
This is from Ben Newell, forty-nine Walnut Hill Lane. This seems like we are planning for a what-if situation that never happens. I've never seen our incredible teachers unprepared in early September. Curious if any of the schools that start before Labor Day see large absence rates those first two days. I'm not in favor of this without additional study or rushing a decision for this fall, when many families have already booked travel.
I I guess my question to that would just be what additional study? What he does, he asked the question, I don't think we have the answer to it, is, is there absenteeism on those first days in August?
That's for sure.
Yeah, that would be the
That would be the additional study?
Yeah.
Yes.
Question.
That he suggests.
Can I ask a question?
You may, but before you do that, I have one more comment from the, uh, community, from, uh, Jennifer Dial, who lives on Rocky Lane, had some address
Oh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one Rocky Lane. She asks, um, how does it affect kindergarten, since they start a day later? Would they go one day and then have a four-day weekend?
Yes.
Yes.
So I thought, I just want to read it in the record. Yes, Mr. Dial.
That's one comment, Mr. Dial.
Your household's maxed out.
What is the twenty-third about? Just to get people a jumpstart on vacation, what?
When you say twenty-third?
The half day.
What, when you say, what is it about?
December twenty-third, sorry.
What, oh, what is the purpose of it? It's to get a day in. So that the end of the
Why can't we just have a full day?
You can, it's just, you're going to add a day at the end.
Okay, don't Yeah, all right. Thanks.
It was just, again, if I'm and we're so inconsistent with it anyway, I mean, if we're inconsistent, give it a half day. No matter if you go post Labor Day or pre-Labor Day.
So I think that we need to, um, just start back, uh, where we, sort of the original proposition, right? The issue that we need to consider, and it seems like some people aren't favored, and that's great. Do do we, like, we weigh the pros and cons of a start, of a starting before Labor Day? I mean, you proposed that we do that, that's what your recommendation is, and that's what you've asked us to consider.
I'm, from an educational perspective.
That's right, and that's, that's why we employ you, right? So to to, so, you know, I I think we need to consider that, and and like, you know, I think that, you know, Mr. Sancho's voiced that there are other creative solutions that we might be able to look at. So that would mean that you probably aren't in favor of doing that, um, at this juncture at least, right?
For this year.
Right, for this year, right? I I'm personally not fair doing it this year because of planning issues, and, um, I I just, I I do think that that's, from what everyone's voiced to me, like, you know, I don't personally have plans that, but I understand that people would have booked that, and it's unfair to then just drop it on people this year. So I agree with Mr. Harold to that extent. And, um, but but that's why Dr. Sullivan has also asked us to consider the whole thing. It doesn't have to be a patch and package deal, so we can consider
And that's also the spirit of notice, so the spirit of notice and consistency, so people know.
Right, right, and and exactly, and that's why, you know, I I I think that, I think that Mr. Sancho raises is a good point, where it's like, we find a creative solution this year, because we have to figure out the calendar anyway. And then we decide on the Labor Day issue or something like Marshfield's for the other years, so that people have something to expect and to, um, you know, um, let's see, uh, Mr. Shaughnessy raised something that I'm trying to remember was a point, um, it was a point, uh, oh, why don't we, I I remember, there there was a question about why, why don't we just table this, it it Labor Day issue until next year? And to me, it's, we'd just be in the same position. So like, I feel like we should figure it out for future years now, and I think, I think, I think it's clear that everyone feels that, or at least a majority from what I'm listening to, feels that it would be unreasonable to implement something like that this year. So I I just would like to, so I think first and foremost, the 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 issue is, do we want to start Labor Day for those three contractual years? Do we want to start before Labor Day, um, as Dr. Sullivan's recommending? Or do we want to do some variation of that, or what do we want to do? And, um, you know, I I think we need to get an answer to that, because that's the issue before us right now. And then we have, don't, don't forget, the the very next agenda item here is discussion of this calendar.
But quite frankly, if you don't vote to do pre-Labor Day for this coming year, then I think I have to go back and create another calendar.
For sure. But I think it's important to but I think it's important to, you have, you have presented a recommendation to us as the superintendent of schools, okay? In consultation with your assistant superintendent, and I want us to consider that and make a decision. And we may agree with you, we may disagree with you. But either way, I think it's important for the next step, which is development of this year's calendar, because as Mr. Sancho points out, if we're not going to do it this year, we need to figure out a solution that does, there's something that we can do to get us out earlier and still, um, and still not interfere with, you know, the summer plans that people may have already made and paid for.
And to have consultation with CTA.
Right, so I think that everyone has commented that wants to from the community. I think that the school committee has had a discussion on this. And, um, you know, I I I personally think it makes, um, it it makes sense to, because of the points Mr. Shaughnessy raised, to adopt something like Marshfield. I think that's a really clever answer to that that issue, that that potential problem. But I do value your recommendation, and I do actually, and I'm I'm listening to two teachers say that there's value to it. Well, actually, I'm listening to four teachers. You guys just aren't teachers anymore.
In the CTA.
And the CTA, of course, that's right.
Not that it was unanimous necessarily.
No, good point, but the association supports it as well, right? But, you know, there's two practicing educators right here that are commenting about it, that are like, yeah, it it actually does, there's some value to it. So that's really compelling to me, um, because we're here to make decisions about, you know, what is the best direction for the district and, and for teaching and learning in the district, right? So it seems like there's So it seems like there's some compelling arguments in favor of it, but certainly not for this year. So I'd like us to consider that recommendation of the superintendent now, because we've discussed it. So the superintendent's recommended that we start school prior to Labor Day. First day of school for students is the Wednesday prior to Labor Day. Students go to school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off. And he's making that recommendation, and his teacher start on Monday, Tuesday. And he's making that recommendation for the next three academic years. That's twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five. So is there a motion? And there doesn't have to be if there is none, right? But there is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
Soon.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's no second to the motion, so is there a different motion?
I think I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we. Go forward bargaining. With less bargaining obligations. To implement. A start time for the twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five school years. Those are the next two. Yeah. With the language or similar language to what was presented, modeled after Marshfield's contract. And that we revisit the twenty two, twenty three school year calendar at our next meeting. With the hope that we start after Labor Day and still. Conclude the school year as indicated on this calendar.
Okay, does everyone understand what Mrs. Clear, the spirit of Mrs. Clear's motion? Basically, she's saying that she'd like us to explore the solution similar to what Marshfield employs for the latter two years of this contract period. In our bargaining efforts with the CTA. And that for this year, she would like us to consider. Trying to realize a similar outcome, but still starting after Labor Day.
Shall I read the bargaining, the pertinent part of the article from Marshfield CBA? So again, what they, what they have in their CBA says, if Labor Day falls on September third, which would be what it is in two thousand twenty four, four, twenty five, by the way. We sit up a second. If, yes, if Labor Day falls on September third or earlier, teachers' work year will start on Tuesday. After Labor Day. If Labor Day falls on September fourth or later, teachers' work year will start the Monday before Labor Day, but the Friday before Labor Day, a no school day.
So that, does that effectively render the motion?
What motion, your motion?
No.
It doesn't. What, what that means is, if we, and again.
What do you mean, like, will we be starting before or after Labor Day the second year of contract?
With this language, we would start pre Labor Day for two thousand twenty three, twenty four, but post Labor Day for two thousand twenty four, twenty five. And then moving forward, that language would set whether we start pre or post.
And remember, that language focuses on teachers' start day, but it's obviously, we have to determine. What we would want to do with students, but it would certainly start school enough days in advance of Labor Day.
It would make sense that we would follow.
Right.
The pattern that I said. But I do want to recognize our CBA.
Yes.
Obligations, but that makes sense because we're talking tomorrow, so. Something to talk about tomorrow.
Okay, so does everyone understand? Dr. Sullivan was just reading that in for clarification because we were referencing it.
Yeah, and, and that, and that was only, I only bring that up because it was in my research. I believe Mrs. Shaughnessy presented it, and it does tap into a concern.
So this motion does not, does not propose a pre Labor Day start for this coming academic year. It proposes exploring creative solutions to get us out earlier, but still starting after Labor Day. But it does ask us to adopt similar language as to the Marshfield contract provision. I just read that up, so does everyone understand? Not Mr. Dial, you look like you have a question.
I, I do. I'm sorry, it's just.
Don't be sorry. Very convoluted.
I, I understand the motion. What I question is, do we need a school committee vote and motion and formal action on this? Or can we just, as a committee, request informally, Dr. Sullivan, represent a calendar with the start date of September sixth. To us at our next regularly scheduled meeting. And then also taking this input as, as the committee, the subcommittee on bargaining. We are now taking the input from the committee to, with respect to our collective bargaining obligations. The reason I add, the reason I raise this is because a motion and vote is, is certainly more binding scenario than I think what we're, what we have information to, to do. So the question then for the forum is, do we need an actual motion on this? Or can we move forward with, on the basis of this discussion?
I, it's a good question. I, I think that the technical answer is no. I, I'd like to, we're addressing this, we're talking about this, we advertised this. I'd like to, I'd like to come to a conclusion, then we go into bargaining, knowing that CTA is watching this, they understand where we're going with this. I think, I think it would help. I think it would help to manage everyone else's expectations, you know, eighteen months from now.
So could we, well, then I might make an amended motion.
Well, there's been a motion, so we can see if it's seconded, and then you can vote against it if you don't like it.
Supposedly I can make a motion to amend the motion, but then we're just getting the confusion.
Well, is it to make it clearer?
Yet most of her clear.
Okay.
Quite a collection. So that the committee. Votes not to start the next school year, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, before Labor Day. But to use efforts to adopt the Marshfield language for the twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five.
That is the motion?
Yes.
Yep, that, that is it, that is it.
Okay.
Okay, does everyone understand what we're voting on? Mrs. Keener, you understand?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I understand that I'm voting against the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, yes. Okay, I, I'm just making sure you understand.
I like to second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been seconded by Mrs. Saint Ange. We'll do a roll call. All in favor, Mrs. Clear? Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
No.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McPhee, so the motion passes by a vote of four to one. Four ayes, one nay. So I think you're clear on the direction we're taking. We need to, so that takes care of the next agenda item, because we can't, we, we need to explore other options here to present. You, you need to present a different, obviously.
So students are certainly starting after Labor Day next year. And the next two years, we'll be looking at that language and working with CTA.
Yes, be careful though, because by next year, we mean next calendar year, not next school year.
Next.
And I'll be bringing that forward this year, so people will have notice.
That's right.
For the fall.
That's right, but to be, be absolutely abundantly clear for everyone at home, we did not just vote to start school before Labor Day in two thousand twenty two.
Correct.
Okay.
The opposite.
That's right, we did the opposite of that. But the language we are, we just voted to approve and, and to apply to upcoming years in the contract, at least for the next, you know, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five. Will result in a pre Labor Day start in twenty twenty three.
Dr. Sullivan, is it possible for you to text or email me that language?
The language from Marshfield CBA? Yes, I can.
Okay, so that takes care of the calendar discussion, because we have to get a new proposed calendar from Dr. Sullivan. We can't talk about this year's calendar because. He needs to go do his homework that Mr. Saint Ange gave him.
Do you want my notes?
Okay, so we'll skip over that agenda item there, Dr. Sullivan, right? Because we need to get a second draft.
Correct, definitely.
All right. Last agenda item on student services forum planning, I think, on the superintendent's board?
Yes, so I just wondered if there's, I mean, we did present sort of our, our course of action and our plan. And I would just, if there's any questions or anything that anybody wants to add after some reflection, I think we kept this on there because, you know, it's obviously a topic of, of importance to the community and to the committee. And so we want to make sure that if there is, if there are fresh ideas or some, we want to make sure this is a successful forum for everyone. So I just, I, I want to keep this open dialogue and discourse at every school committee meeting, even if it's just to say, no, I think we're at a good spot right now for, for what, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, I think we went into it a lot last time. We did, and I think that we have a good plan in that we're trying to present in open form for families to. Become a little bit more informed about the student services arena and offerings and, and to allow for some open discourse on our capabilities, room for improvements. But, and there'll be further discussion about this, I think, at future dates, but maybe to reiterate, because we did, I think, select a date for it, right? Attentive date?
Yeah. It was May.
And I, I was just looking, and I don't think, I, I didn't. I did, May eighteenth, at, at potentially six P M. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't highlight the time yet, but May eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yes, because we thought that people were used to school related forums on Wednesday days. So we'll be talking more about that. Obviously, we're, you know, two months away from that, but we want to keep it on the agenda. So thank you for going that, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Yes, very, very great.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Sullivan. And Mrs. Owen will move now into finance portion of the agenda.
Well, can you help me share?
Oh, I'll give you the power.
Don't forget your jacket, Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you.
Sure.
You now have the power.
You got it?
Okay. That is interesting as this last conversation. So this is the February, F twenty two finance update. I'm, I'm not going to read every sentence. It shows as of February twenty eighth that we've expended twelve million, two hundred and thirteen thousand of the twenty one million dollar budget. We're sixty three percent, sixty two point five two percent, and we're actually sixty eight percent through the year. So we're still running a little behind, which is good, or should take a look ahead. We have incumbent supplies and materials and purchase orders in the amount of one point four five six. Remaining balance from now till the end of the year is seven million, nine hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars, which we will use for unanticipated and unexpected salaries and any other. Unanticipated supplies and materials that, that come through. The more important issue that we've been following last month, there was no change to spend tuition, which was nice. This month, we have had another change. So we reported probably two months ago that we were deficit by about four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars in our tuition. We have since had, we've left that private school tuition go from the day program to a residential, which puts us at a negative five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars. Shortfalls of tuition to account.
Hundred, is that?
That's a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars.
For one student?
Yes.
That's a lot.
Yep.
Yes.
What, what's, I don't know what residential program events was.
They live there.
Yeah.
It's a lot of accommodations.
It's expensive. I know it, I, my family.
Yeah. A hundred and twenty four actually is probably on the lower end of the spectrum. It can go more, more, more than that. The, not that it's good news that. Because that student has now become residential, there will be a cost savings transportation, which is also expensive. So we haven't seen that, to recognize it yet, but you will see that coming probably in the next month. There'll be, we'll have a reduction in our, our transportation to that child. So obviously, Washington's switches closely, not a swan, swan, or not even, you know, watching. She's, you know, trying, trying her best to keep students, you know, in the places that they need be, but sometimes they need to be in a residential program. Let me get into the individual school budgets, which I like to show you. We're all in fifty six, fifty five, fifty one percent here, so we're still running ahead of the game, which is nice. Circuit breaker is the reimbursement on spec tuitions that hasn't changed at all. Definitely in the current year. D F kill and medical supply track in analysis in the process of being rewritten, the specifications, we're gonna have to redo them. They have yet completed all the facilities in the, apparently, the chairman officer, Tom Hall, to, to redo those, the language for those bits. The other good sparkle heads have just about been completed, I think it just kind of since now. Track and turf replacement is exciting. We opened those bits on April fourth, we had a walkthrough, we only had one vendor come through, but several of the other vendors. That have asked for specifications, we can last year for the walkthrough, they've worked on our track, so they didn't really need to come do a walkthrough, they know, they know what the job entails. The wood shop does quite there, I have completed, this is too, too small pieces, I think the vendor was out today. We have to come up with a system of barrels of where to put the sawdust and how we're going to move from wood shop area. So that's really only pieces left. It's more of a, just operational internal. Door fobs, we completed during April break, they had some complications over at, you know, hospital, Deer Hill. So they, they could not finish, but they will finish definitely April break. Science lab, high school, the plumbing work is begun, I can hear them up there pounding away over my head. Pilot programs of technology, the materials have been ordered, and then the two leases for Chromebooks in school was obviously complete. We've been working remotely with capital. We've prioritized, this, this is the list, we have not changed it from the last, the last time we visited it. There's definitely more questions about paint, zones, furniture, safety on my window shades, school boards. So we sent them a lot of upgraded information. They wanted more detailed information on school boards, so we're, we're gathering that information, we've sent everything with the request of us to date. And I think we're gonna have another, another Zoom meeting in the near future. I give you some summary of the electric and the gas, always a month behind there just because of the building cycles. They can see for electric. We definitely have a high new petition we did last year.
Here.
Here. And it's been really cool.
And this room is so hot. So.
Correct, you walk around.
Today's pretty good.
Today's pretty good. Gas, same thing, we've gone up a little bit in gas, got a lot, but the gas was also done up still the last year, but as you said, Dial, and. We had a fully worn hair for a full year, so. The grants, we have had some changes to the grants, I highlighted them in yellow. So the sped improvement. School improvement and quality grant, they gave us an additional one hundred and ninety dollars. Don't spend it all on place, Leslie. The school sped ID grant, which is the two forty grant, they gave some additional one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. To spend early childhood grant, they gave us an additional thirty six dollars. Kind of one gave us an additional fifteen dollars. And then two American rescue plan, one for special ed and one, one for early childhood and one for disabilities, they gave us an additional three hundred and seventy seven dollars and two hundred and fifty two dollars. So that comes from the patent event, we now have to go in and make the limits of how we're gonna spend the additional money. Not a lot of money, but it's more money. So revolving accounts, been following. So what has changed is the school insurance recovery for the last probably two years, it said, it said five thousand forty dollars, now it's up to twenty nine. We did get twenty five thousand dollars to put towards the press box. And then supplies and materials that were inside the press box, that obviously isn't the complete amount, but it's like an advantage check, so we have to see that. Athletic.
We don't know to date the full amount of the land, the settlement?
Yes.
Why don't we forget that? It seems to be a pretty, pretty protracted insurance.
So they've been going back and forth with, like, athletic, Steve, for telling me about, you know, the contents of the building, Steve, they've been questioning to quote Steve. On all the equipment that he lost inside the building. I think the building itself, they probably have a pretty good estimate of what the contractor started to house, he came out right after it happened. I think he's just waiting for the weather to break before he sell them.
Do you have any idea what the contract, what the, what the estimate of the structure itself was?
I don't often have it, but I can find out. I mean, I, I need heading emails out last week to say, once starting to break, can we get the press box going because we needed sports.
Sure, I'd just be curious, it's like, it's just insurance comes around. So I just, I, I want to know, I want to, I, I want to know how much we're getting. So I just, I, I wanna know, I wanna, I wanna know how much we're getting for that, I wanna know, you know. Cause it's gonna be more than twenty-nine thousand dollars for that thing up. Like, like you just said. October and it's like, let's go here, let's go, right?
I think the twenty-five is more of the actual supply materials. The insurance company hired their own contractor already, who's already come out. Um, cause they're paying the job, so they've already come out and sorry, taken all the measurements.
Okay, cause there was some ADA issues. I mean, it might be for us, it doesn't matter, but if you're.
It is important, we'd talk about it, I, I would expect that the, the. Building when rebuilt would match, meet every new code.
They're gonna have. I'm not, I'm not refuting you anyway, since at the insurance company, that it's just like, let's go. Yeah, sure, yeah, what insurance companies do.
Tuesday, Wednesday, just said, what's the status, and I have not heard that.
It's like, it's like, I used to have a professor in law schools, insurance companies are worse than Las Vegas, even when you win, they make you fight. Let's go.
None of the other, you know, revolving accounts showing any issues. As we spoke, the athletic department was purchasing new equipment, trying to re-revamp some of their facilities. Sending the cafeteria, she's also now looking at some. Pub style tables for the.
What about the?
We're still waiting for connection with IP.
Still waiting for that. Technology, we just had, didn't we just have? Did we? Cause I was gonna ask that question, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous. All the TVs are there, they're up, but you can't have technology.
There's one at the front of the high school as you walk in, there's one at the back. By the bus loop that you walk in, those are the two of the high school, and then each cafeteria has one.
Can, can we put it to, can you actually put a timetable on it and ask when we can do it, save by the end of the month?
Are they encountering difficulties, or is it just? Something else, like?
I don't think, the, the plan was to do it during February break, and I think. There were some issues outside of the series, kind of delayed the TVs.
Do we have an ability to bump stuff to the top of it to do this? That's a real question.
Really, yeah.
Like, I mean, like when I submit a tech ticket, I can say if it's like an emergency or not.
So you just say Ron to Ron, if the school community was asking why he's thinking.
Just to recreate athletic evolving, trying to spend it, you know, spend some of the money and, and put it back into the program, so. Multi purpose net upgrade, we did an upgrade to the middle field, now we're actually working on bringing the bullpens.
Yeah, when is that is going on now, upgrade, there's still upgrading field, cause they're. Still not up to their expectations. Okay, oh, that's good, I, 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 yeah, okay.
No, I don't know, what else?
Well, there's some things they want, they can't have, it's a fence, I mean, must we do a temporary fence, cause there's no home run. But I guess the, the field itself has been fixed, right, the.
A billiken?
Yeah.
Yes.
So now they're working on the bullpen.
Okay.
That was just.
Oh, good.
Cafeteria upgrades the website, TV screens, elevator vending machine.
Yeah, one second.
It was on six month waiting list, so.
Do you know the, the, the? Yeah, can you? Yeah, I just like.
New serving line is in the works, we were hoping that we were gonna be able to knock out part of that wall and that. Can't knock out the wall, put a window there, because it's full of all kinds of wiring. But they're basically gonna open this door that opens in and they're gonna open the doorway and then.
Okay.
So students will still get. Their, their walkthrough won't be in and out of the cafeteria.
We'll just give them all rooms for tables, cause it's kind of tight.
And then the high school added the two forty-two TV screens, which you talked about, transportation. We talked about this, we have purchased or in the process of. Our stock finder, which allows parents to track their children, which is. We're putting the quote, we're waiting for the equipment, it basically is a GPS system that we can plug right into our buses. Next to our software and the parents can track.
That's awesome, one of those quick, you know, visible changes, I love that.
And it works like even under a slow road where our cell phones are.
Well.
So a real question, people?
I hope so.
I don't know, there's a lot of dead zones.
Oh, you mean, does the device work? Not, your cell phone might not.
Well, my cell phone definitely won't, but yeah, is the, is it gonna like? Be still be able to send out?
I, I wanna say it will, it will. I used my GPS to find my way back here, and my GPS worked.
Let's question whether it can send the buses signal back in time, we'll find out.
Well, let's, we'll find out, let's get it.
Just a genuine concern.
The other thing about transportation is we still have to realize is that we are still paying. Quite a few dollars to park our school buses.
Yes.
It's definitely a concern, and if anybody has any, I don't know if we can have a general discussion on this as a community to say. Where can we put the school buses, because it's still a big issue, and we still keep kicking the can down the road and. It's expensive, so that's something we all want to keep in our. I know there's still no answer to it, but I didn't think that.
Sorry.
No.
There's some sort of proposal for something, we, we can put it on the agenda, you want to put that on the agenda?
I think you should, I really do.
Put it on the agenda, I, I think it's a good point, Mr. Green, let's put it on the agenda, let's, let's, I'll make a note of that.
Also. Looking into with. I'm not sure her title, I'm your model.
Chair of the alternative energy committee.
Thank you, on that electric bus, so we're still going back and forth with the vendor. They're trying to get the price dropped to be equitable to what we pay for a regular bus, otherwise, why, why wouldn't do it? So that's kind of where we're sitting. But, you know, we're still engaging in that conversation.
It just doesn't, it didn't feel like it was the right time to come have them present here, right, because we're still trying to like, the price doesn't make sense yet.
At this point, you know, the, the budget is proceeding based on projections, there's no concerns other than. My minor concerns watching special education tuition skyrocket. So definitely following that closely with special education partners as well. I don't know if there's any other questions on actual monthly updates.
Any questions, just ask them.
Any updates on our budget approval process that we're doing with the town?
So we've been going back and forth email with vice advisory.
Advisory.
With advisory, they, right, as of this morning, they, they've got another request with a bunch of, I pretty much sent them everything they wanted.
The plan is to meet with them this week.
Still in meteorites.
Yes. We've sent them pretty much everything.
We will be meeting with advisor this week.
I have a question. Do we, this, and this might be an inappropriate or stupid question, but do we? Is there a way to sort of see how our special ed tuitions? Compared to similar sized districts, do you know what I mean? And is that valuable? I mean, I know we have, we are obligated to pay and. Students should be able to access education as they need to, I just, this is all very concerning, these like. Yellow highlighted numbers, everything, you know, I mean, it's concerning, and I'm just, I don't know if there would be even any value in that, I mean, it just is what it is, or.
So, I mean, I, I could print you out a copy of the. On, on this's website, there's a circuit breaker. For every district, for every district, and it will show you. And it will show you every district, it will show you their total tuition submitted, what they got for reimbursement rates, how many students are included there.
I guess I'm also curious, right, I guess I'm also curious the residential versus day program. Do you know what I mean, like, but I don't know if there's any even any value.
Prescribed it as needed and changes throughout the life of that child, I just don't think that that's even, I think it's a really good question. But when you think about, these are different humans and different situations, and their own situations are changing, like, how do you compare that?
And different teaching and learning solution as well as districts.
How does one compare that?
I, I don't think you could.
I, I, I think the only thing that we can do as a, as a, as a committee, or as, as a community, is do what we're doing. We're highly focused on student services, so we get to the problem early. And in that we keep kids in district, because it just shows how important it is that we keep kids in district. So if we need to, when we do argue for facilities, we, we have to argue the point that we have to save money in the long run. If you give us facilities to adapt to each kid's situation. And programmatic reviews, which we're endeavoring in right now, which will tell us where we might be. I mean, you know, a, a language based program or some program that might keep some of our students in. I mean, granted, as we just.
If we can build capacity within our own.
Absolutely, so when we, and that will be something Craig, we bring up in the, the school facilities. To make these new schools, that we can fight for things that are. To answer your question, I think it's, it's a good question.
Yeah, I, I liked the question, and I think. I don't know that there's an answer to it, as, as you're suggesting, but I think as a, I mean, we're looking at big numbers and the yellow numbers, which is something that I think as a committee, we need to pay attention to. And so perhaps one thing that might be helpful is, you know, and one question you have, and this is a topic, so I don't mean to sound insensitive about it, but. One question that you have is, are we getting the right services for the dollar, and how are we overseeing that? So maybe one thing that we could have in our special services update is how these expenditures are monitored, how people decide. You know, what services to acquire, you know, and how they're overseeing to make sure that they, that they are providing not only. What, providing everything the students need, but at a, you know, like, if that number is one point six million dollars, that might be too much. But it'd be interesting to see to understand, for us to understand as a committee that process.
Yep.
By which those expenditures are governed.
And I would add, the building of a therapeutic program. Could certainly help us, I, I, I know that for sure, and that's something that, it's a little different than what you said, but. The idea of looking at what we can do to keep people in district, that, that's a huge one. That jumps up the page to me when I look at.
And I, I think it's all very useful going into this student services forum, because I, I think sometimes. Like, I, I personally have had conversations with parents who are like, how is it possible that our special education? Budget is that big, and it's like, well, I mean, the cost is the cost, right, and if a student needs to go out of district, a student needs to go out of district. And if a student needs to go from out of district to residential, that's an even larger jump. And I think that that's something that maybe, if I don't understand it completely, why would? People who aren't sitting in school committee meetings every week understand it, and so it's a useful piece of information. For us to be able to understand and communicate, because I think. To your point, moving forward there, and to the point of the last couple of meetings, when we're talking about the budget and what we're asking for next year. And how difficult it is to accommodate it, we need to help more people understand. That there's, there's a finite amount of resources. And there are definite requirements for us to spend money on, and we need to figure out how to bridge that gap. And people need to be willing to show up to advocate for that, if that's what we're asking.
So I, I might suggest a couple of things, one is, is maybe this is something that, cause I, I didn't know until tonight, the scope of these residential programs. It'd be interesting, as part of that student services forum, to talk about the various types of student services that we have, what's, you know, what does it mean to go? To, to private, what does it mean to do residential? I, I, you know, as, as Kaleri's saying, I didn't know about it, I said on the committee, so the people who are in the community should know about these things too. Cause they need to know what's available to them on this district, cause I think it's commendable that we're, that we're doing this, that we're helping students, and people should know about it. It should be celebrated in a way that, that, that could be, could be better, and then the, the second thing is. Is, is understanding a little bit more about how that expenditure decision process is made and overseen, I think that would be something good for this, for this community, that's.
That's fair.
Yeah, and, and I, and I agree with you, I, I just also think that too is that. That we, the, the monies that we do spend to these schools, that they know that they need to be accountable as well, to make sure that those students are getting. All that they should get, and I, I, I think sometimes, and I, and I hope that some of these schools recognize that. Listen, this isn't a blank check, you know, there should be some accountabilities, and if that school's getting to the point for the student. Because, you, you know, there's, you see that, and, and, and I'm speaking from a. An uncle that deals with this, from my brother, and, and some of the things that, there's frustration with is the school not being accountable. To anybody, so I just want to realize that these schools need to be accountable still to us. Cause those are our kids, even though they're going to another school, they better be doing a good job, cause if you're not. Then there's, you know, we want to teach, we, we just want the parents to know that, you know, we, we got their back. So that they're not just, they're just, this is what you get, and that's it, you know, cause. If it's not working for the student, then all of us need to say, okay, we need to help you figure out, and I know we have a good student service. I just want her to know that, and, and I, I hope I speak with the committee that we have, we have the kids back. And, and we want them to be accountable to that kid.
I mean, Miss Alon, probably getting what you deal, but I, I do know that, you know, there's a team, and that team is with, with the students' team. And the parents, so it's an amicable meeting most of the time.
Yeah.
And the, the placement is usually mutual, unless it's a farm, and when there are some schools, you know, like. Lance, like Perkins for the blind, there's very few schools out there for the blind, Perkins is. Probably one of the only ones that we're open, right? Very pricey, but when you have someone that goes there, you know, it's very specified in what they need, and if they become residential, it becomes more respective. There are schools specific to that particular disability. So it really depends where you go. Ready to rock? Ready to rap? Ready for the next year FY twenty-three budget update? We have not made changes, but I'm just gonna over the presentation, because we have the public forum coming up on the thirtieth, I believe, five thirty. FY twenty-three budget priorities, which we've all seen. I basically took our budget worksheet and wrote it down by page, you can see here. Our current budget is twenty-one million six hundred and eighty-four thousand, our contractual obligations of a seven hundred and eighty-seven hundred thirty-two. The increase to circuit breaker funding. Is a credit to us of fifty-three thousand, and we have an increase of special tuition for another two hundred and fifteen thousand. Retirement, so priority requests are about seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. Now, but then they're all priority request, but that's just the basics. The second round. Is to add the grade two feature, they want some enrollment class size. That, there's five sections now, I believe we're going to six, the current grade one has six sections, so it will just continue with the same number of sections. And then the math specialist at the middle school, it's just because we know our, our income scores in math are a bit. Low than we'd like to see, so the math specialist would definitely be well needed in that area. And then we're gonna continue the process of trying to reduce our full day kindergarten tuition, hopefully someday to get, you know, to be free. And then the increase to supplies and materials, which advisor been asked for the backup to that this morning, we provided it. It's a combination of different departments, different things. It all, it just adds up. So the total budget increase requested is 1,016,122, which is a 4.6% increase. And as we know, the town right now is offering up to 3.047, which is down to nearly yellow, 660,920. So right now our shortfall is about 355,202. There was talk with advisory about specialization fund. Could we possibly use that to help with the anticipated increase in spent tuitions? I don't know, you know, that was just a topic of conversation. We haven't gotten any finality on anything yet. So we're moving forward with a 4.69% budget increase. And then each principal put in a couple of slides, and we can scroll quickly. So Oscar, with Principal Lisa Farrell, she gave us her, her priority, to support social, emotional, distraction, cultural confidence, and responsiveness. For my multi-tier system of support, continue to support co-teaching inclusive, to implement math curriculum and support grades, sorry, I can't see the rest of my screen. Just have to get your little faces off my screen. Okay. Practice pre-k to implement math curriculum and support grades k2, to establish a valid assessments being used and analyzed data to drive instruction for students to close any achievement gaps, to continue with related facility, and then again to increase the number of classroom teachers.
So it might be better if you put it on presentation. Just, yeah, if you just, like, whatever you just, undo that, and then just put it on present. Sit at the back. There it is, now go to slideshow. Slideshow. Then, from current slide. Come over, keep going over. There you go.
Much better. Thank you.
Get by with a little help from your friends. When I was struggling with the map, my friend to the right.
No, she just wants to.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
You know, the data supporting her budget priorities of the district strategic plan, school super plan, school case assessment data, and the schedule of summer, painting continues to be in effect, and replacing those ceiling tiles and main floor. Those are just her priorities. These are the enrollment for current year and next year. So you can see the current grade one, 107 students coming forward to grade two. They're accustomed to having a class size of what, 18? So going into, from grade one to grade two, we're just carrying and adding a section.
Is that, is adding a grade two teacher?
Yes, so I want to make.
So otherwise, if we don't get the money, then, then if we don't get funded, there's like 28 kids.
No, no, it would be, I think it's 21.4. But, but the point is, our point here is that coming off of the last couple of years with the pandemic and the regression in particularly literacy skills and these skills, we want to keep those numbers low, because we want as intensive help at that early developmental age. And we're gonna need it, if you can see the numbers, we're gonna need it the year after anyway. So, I mean, just from a numbers perspective, we would break the bank. So we do need to, but we need it now. Like, we need those numbers, that's where our attention needs to be on those younger kids who might have missed that skill.
So it'll go, let's get this clear, is it 17 point, no, grade two would be 20 to 21?
So if we did not increase to be six in grade two. Yeah, no, no, I'm looking at it, see, see, if you look at the last column, if we did not increase it to be six in grade two, because right now it's five, then that number would be the 17-pointing. We turn it into 21.4.
Three kids.
Per class. Yeah, okay, slot, 22, yeah.
Yeah. 22, well?
No, a little less.
Yeah.
Some classes would have 21, some have 22.
Right. Like you said, in this regression era.
In a lower grade.
I only bring that up because.
You want, that's, those are the kids that need.
Know that three kids per class.
Yeah, and anyone who's teaching in that level knows that they need, they need all the support they need, they're coming in with some gas.
Yeah, they want the smaller numbers at the younger grades.
This is more of just what Principal Farrell's saying, you know, what her, what her priorities are, and her request is what's still important.
I'm sorry, can I go back, and we want to move along, but I don't, can I go back, can you go back to the numbers? I just, the, the grade two goes from 104 to 107. From this, this year to next year, am I reading that right?
No, it's, goes from 107 to, grade one go, grade one is now 107, next year it'll be 107. Yes, well, it's even more than, right?
Grade one, so on the left, the far left column, that's the enrollment for this year, right? So grade one is 107.
Yeah, right.
And then, the enrollment for grade one next year is gonna be 127?
Yes, kindergarten.
Yes.
Yep. But why are we adding a grade two teacher and not a grade one teacher? Because grade two only increases by three teachers. Three, sorry, three kids, not three teachers. Grade two increases only by three kids, whereas grade one increases by 20 kids, and we get to a 21.1 student-teacher ratio.
Because we currently have six teachers in grade one.
Okay.
We only have five teachers in grade.
So we're doing two things. We're getting a teacher in a critical position now.
That's it, that's what I meant by the break the bank.
Yes, okay, so that, that makes a ton of sense. I just want to make sure I understood, yes. Ooh, numbers.
Then we're getting to Dino with Principal Solomon. Her school priorities, ELA, curriculum, and special model.
Shout out to the.
Yeah, graphics, yeah.
We have engagement, social, emotional, MTSS, multi-tiered, and then school facilities. It's on their list, which is nice to see, Principal, they're now actually putting it out there on priorities that they want to go to be better.
That is a great graphics.
Yeah. It's on the t-shirts.
You get carrots, you get exercise, you get inclusivity.
You're reading Rover's stuff, right?
Oh, I didn't pick up on that.
And this is the enrollment for this current year for Dino, and for next year projected. So, no increases here. Grade five is going back to grade six, so that one to a whole, eight to six. Hi, chat, well, she put together to support her budget request, show how she divides up her priorities. And her budget request supports student learning, again, about the responsive, versatile classroom, elementary math curriculum, educational software, which is three blocks, like, see, the Stephanie Ed Tech, technology hardware, so this is gonna be some of the special education, and again, progression of building up the capital. The middle school with Principal Mills. He wants to, these are his priorities, develop our multi-tiered system to support students at different academic, social, emotional levels, develop curriculum, teaching practices, and learning opportunities distinguished by personalized modern project based on promoting equitable opportunities for and social, emotional models of all schools. First priority is creation of math intervention 1.0. We want the development of multi-tiered systems of support, support students again, with different academic, social, emotional levels, so here is the add of the math specialists.
That's not a lot to ask.
No, this is, that's the defeating part of this.
No big ask.
Yeah, it's no one's fault, it's just, it's just very discouraging.
So, as you know, he says here, you know, more priorities. Dino's general education students have a math specialist, but the middle school doesn't. He's using I-ready math benchmarks, which indicates approximately 10% of the middle school students with two grades or more prime. Strategic link calls for such capacity building at the middle school. So, I mean, this is data backing up why we need the math.
It's critical.
And yes, enrollment as well for the middle school, try it year next year.
Well, so you, it's basically the same, a lot of kids go to maybe Boston College, I think Boston High School, or leaving, because you have a grade eight projected going down.
No.
It's just grade seven.
Current grade seven. Moving forward to grade eight.
Oh, okay.
So the grade six of 94 is moving to grade seven 94. So again, develop curriculum, teaching practices, and learning opportunities distinguished by personalized learning and project-based learning, posing a work坊creating and implementing new robotics process.
Yeah, he'd present that.
Yeah.
So we should be able to do a lot of that, right? That's the sort of thing we should be doing a lot of, like, it should be, like, that's the one exciting thing. Everything else is like bare bones, if you have to do it, it's critical.
Right.
This is like exciting, there should be a lot of exciting things, and we can't, we don't have the money to do it.
It is exciting until you think that we don't have an articulated computer science framework and technology path.
Right.
So, I mean.
But it's the first step.
Well, it's exciting, but it's not extra. It's like essential, because any good.
And that's a great point, that's a great point.
It's an exciting bare bones zone.
I'm excited, but we should have.
It's exciting that we're at least starting, like, we're right, we're taking the first, first small step here, and that's exciting. But I mean, there's, it's just progress, right? Instead of just being like, oh, it's just like, it's like, it's like, at least we're like, maybe like, you know, like, putting a little on bank instead of just living paycheck to paycheck here, is what I'm saying.
This is exciting.
And it's just, it's just.
The current numbers, right, don't level fund them.
Just.
No, no.
So that's important, that's good words, those are good words. We are not currently in a position where we are looking at being level funded.
Right. Right. Sorry, that's okay. So, and he, you know, he says he surveyed middle school students, and 60% of them are interested in rolling in robotics.
Oh, yeah.
It's just more priorities, develop curriculum, teaching practices, and learning opportunities. Support each middle school teacher team, and the development of a project-based learning experience at each grade level by providing high-level professional development. So, these are all the priorities. More data supported. Driving his priorities home here.
That's good.
So you see it.
Love that logo.
And then he gives us where he got all his information. Okay, the high school with Principal Scott. So again, his is implement personal learning, place funding in the curriculum, teaching and learning. School improvement plan goal one is to improve the student learning experience and wellness by reducing academic stress and providing personalized learning tasks. High school isn't asking for anything in admissions. We're gonna learn, and I'm just gonna share in the next year, they're asking to keep paying their teachers. Yes. Which we can't current, don't give it.
That's current, right?
So this is, this is current, 105, 103, 118, and then next year, 218, 105, 103, 118. The numbers just kind of move through. Yes. Yes, because I think.
That is a good class, huh?
Yeah, it's Jackson, yeah.
And then just future budget concerns, we want to continue the, you know, introduction of free kindergarten, or the continuation of finding it there. Ongoing need to support social, emotional learning. We're following enrollment trends, we're working on a technology integration, and we're building our computer science curriculum, so those are kind of our future.
Yes.
And a budget concern.
Well, is this our budget, or is this the high school's budget?
This is overall, including what we are.
Well, I would say that social, emotional learning is, it really probably should say social, emotional wellness. Because I think that therapeutic element to special education is a, is a large one. So maybe we can change.
I just feel like that's such a big situation right now, so leave it out.
Well, or we want to be more specific in, you know, say, therapeutic learning, or.
Well, yeah, building a, well, you could add that.
Developing effective student services, I mean, I think, I think adding that in there.
Developing a therapeutic element to our student services.
That is on the.
Yep, and, and supported by Mrs. Swakka, and we have ideas around that too.
So you want my addable to that?
Yeah.
Saying, social, emotional wellness.
What I just said.
Integrating a therapeutic element into student services.
Yes, integrating a therapeutic element to our student services offerings.
Because when I'm hearing that, Kirk, that's actually net overtime cost savings.
It is, that's, that was one of the things presented, we got, we got the new social worker.
Yes.
It's definitely one of the bills. And it's also progress for the district, right? Just something we're in desperate short supply of, or whatever, in terms of resources. You know, but incredible leadership right now, and we do not have the resource we need to allow them to be unleashed. Yeah, the building, I mean, you want to talk about losing people out of district in high school? That's gonna keep on going up if we don't, if we don't start offering competitive facilities. So, I mean, we're just not gonna be able to compete with other, with other private facilities if we don't, we don't do something.
Okay, so I added the last line up here. Is that what we wanted to say?
Yep.
We got one more to go. Any more questions on the budget for next year? And like I said, we have the public forum coming up on the 30th at 5:30. We're meeting with advisory, we haven't nailed on a date, but they wanted to, he has them this week.
I think the only thing I would ask Dr. Sullivan, if you could send out an email, let the parents know that we have this coming up, and if they really, really are passionate, please come out and support it, because it's power, powers and numbers.
I will.
Nobody there, and they're gonna look and say, hey, you know, the stuff that you're asking for, you really don't need it. You know, to put things into perspective. 22 million dollars, you got a relief pitcher for the Red Sox. A whole school district getting paid for 22 million. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'm gonna give us a sign for the budget.
Yeah. So I ask the 18 people that are listening to, please come to this meeting, because again, it is powers and numbers, and these are the things that we're asking for. We're not asking for a lot, we're asking for math teachers, we're asking for things that, the bare bones things that our children need to be successful.
And when, where's the meeting again, just for the record?
Here, 5:30.
5:30, and I will, I will send out a separate email. Twice, and I'll also put it, I'll highlight it prominently in the newsletter. I'll bring, I'll bring some fruit, how's that? Mr. Curran's gonna.
I like that fruit. I like. Mr. Dobbs, half an hour before the, we just have it like, you know. Nobody ever shows up, so it would be great if we could do something about that.
It's important for us, we will.
Mrs. Owen, can you please continue with the review of the substitute teacher pay rate?
Okay, I know we had this discussion, I went back to get clearer numbers, just because the last few years that I put up here, we really have four years. So FY18, this is, this is what it looked like. There was 1,086 substitute teachers.
Well, there were 1,086 days. Or instances.
Yes. FY19, there was. Uh, FYE nineteen, there was over higher. And then we got into twenty, which I think we see, I think I had twenty on here. So definitely the numbers down. Numbers down to twenty one and then part year down, so.
So down as far as like, you would think that would be opt because of the COVID relates Delta. Actually, we cost less.
We weren't in school that day.
But in twenty one.
But in twenty one, I mean, that's, that's.
On twenty one. Kids are nine. Well, think about in twenty one, we started out in a hybrid model.
Yeah.
Yeah, with no Wednesday, super inconvenient state of sickness.
No, we were in full time.
No, no, this year is all year, all year. We've been in.
This is more twenty two.
Twenty one, we started. How about this time last year, right? Or like.
Yes.
So it's actually less. That's impressive to teachers because.
So at the beginning of the year, we weren't.
Yeah, well, that's impressive because for me, my salary, so we had a lot of people sick, so.
So again, I mean, it was just here for discussion of, you know, we, we don't, we don't pay a lot. Eighty dollars a day. We saw that we're in the minority of what we're paying. Um, and I just hear some examples of we, if we increased. By ten, fifteen and twenty.
Well, okay, so.
But again, we've done it home with that money to follow.
Yeah. I, I just think I wouldn't get out of bed for less than a dollar a day. I, I really wouldn't. I mean, it's just, it's just, you know, and I, I gotta say.
That comes from a place of.
I, I'll tell you this though. I, I'd like to, you, you're talking about, and first of all, I'd like to thank all the teachers who do substitute teachers. When we had a substitute teacher, we probably couldn't pay them. Remember high school and sub kid was there? I mean, we all do, so I have no problem with to recommend that we pay on those.
I made eighty dollars a day for a six hour day. We're paying them thirteen, thirty, three and all, which is.
Illegal.
Minimum wage.
I mean, it's not funny though. It's sad. It's sad because I don't know where we're, I, I, where are we gonna come up with twenty two grand?
That's the thing. It's like.
It's like, it's sad because it's like, this shouldn't be happening, but we can't, I mean, where even twenty two thousand dollars is something where we're like, where are we gonna come up with that? I guess we could slash that twenty five thousand and try and reduce the full day in kindergarten, but then we stopped doing that. When did we ever start that up again, right? And we're trying to do that.
Well, the good news is that when, when you think about it.
It's, it's just like.
If, if, if we continue the trend, it's not gonna cost us more because we actually have less sick dates than we did prior.
Yeah, but you can, you can, you, that'll revert the meat. You have to.
Well, things open up back. You think of the stage.
Yes.
Sick days will come back. It's been too inconvenient, sick day. It's just, it's, it's hard to take sick days.
So when we, when we last saw this, we saw presentations on the market rates. I don't have it in front of me, but I think they were clustering around, we were low at eighty, but they were clustering around ninety with some districts at a hundred. But so the, the idea, at least to be market and to be able to continue, the, the concern is that you can't get.
You're not competitive.
You can't get substitutes. They'll just go to him. And so, you know, we can't, everyone needs to get out of bed. And we need to make sure it's a, it's a number that gets them out of bed and come as the capacity instead of somewhere else. So it seems like we do need to do this. The question is, let, let's just, you know, circle, soft circle the ninety dollars a day. Can we find? Eleven thousand dollars? Like, do we have the ability to do that to make sure that we can get substitute teachers and not have to like cancel school or send Dr. Sullivan now to do. Teaching.
I just don't understand how you can pay under minimum wage and get away with it. It's not good. I, I just don't understand how we can do that.
And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Curran. I guess the question is, yeah, where, where do we get, I mean, I guess the question I have is where we get the money?
Legal liability there.
It's just showing our needs as a district and the fact that we're, we're.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta vote for it because honestly, we gotta figure out how to find the money. And, and we, I mean, again.
What would, what would be the proposal?
They're gonna vote people with qualifications.
Well, I mean, nine dollars a day would make it close to fifteen dollars, which.
Well.
It's better than thirteen, thirty three.
Yeah.
It's just, again, it's finding the money. I mean, right now, we're.
So I want to do this.
Thin.
But I, I, I don't want to do it if we can't live up to it.
Do you want to bounce the check?
No, I don't want to bounce, not the teach, not certainly not the substitute teacher. They're always ninety dollars. You can't give the ninety dollars like.
And they're not even really getting a follow up.
But, right, they gotta match this. We have, we need to pay social security.
The issue is gonna find somewhere where we're gonna create the money.
Well, where, this was my issue last time. Obviously, I support paying everyone a healthy wage, right? Well, you don't want to have other freezes and take away from our already skeletal.
Can we tack this into our number? We're three hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. We're in a short for twenty twenty three. Can we just add ten thousand dollars? It'd be three hundred and forty three thousand dollars short. I mean. Right? Let's, let's put this in our next year's budget. Ten thousand dollars.
There's no place else, right?
No, I mean, no.
Well, we have to ask for it. I mean, like, we can't generate it. We're not gonna sell the books, you know?
Where can we get from?
And no one's gonna buy them anyway.
And everything else we're trying to build.
Well, I mean, now's the time. Make a motion if you wanna ask.
I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we add the. No, it's called twelve thousand dollars to the request for budget from the town.
Could you?
For next year in order to finance a. Increase in substitute teacher salaries to ninety dollars.
Are we trying to pay if we're asking for more money? Are we going to give a better rate?
That's, yeah, that's that.
Well, that's in what ratio do you need? Like what we are saying, like you don't ask for an override now and then like, can I have another one later?
No, we need the money. It's hundred dollars.
Well, if we're gonna go for an override, I think we're gonna bigger than three hundred and forty five thousand dollars.
A hundred percent, but also right now, if we want to increase our. We're asking for money. You ask for more and then maybe get less.
I think you're gonna have a hard time. I love this idea. Because I think you're gonna have a hard time convincing people that they shouldn't, that you shouldn't pay people more than thirteen dollars.
It's a strong argument.
I'd love someone to argue that, that some of the college education should get paid fifty bucks.
So it's a strong argument. I think the, the openness of the tables, do we, do we ask on the ninety or do we ask on?
Hundred.
Hundred.
Hundred, obvious, definitely.
Then we're really competitive. We're getting cream of the crop subs coming in. Not just watch the glowing box for an hour. It's, they're actually maybe doing some learnings.
So.
So.
So we're asking for that for next year, so that we, the next school year. So this year, we stay at the rate at which we currently pay.
Well, well, let's, let's buy for.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, no, because I think, I think for this year, didn't we have money to make the change for this year?
No.
No.
I think we're paying them on rates because I don't think it's.
Well, that's what it was. There's, there's ability to freeze.
Right, right.
So that is.
The other thing that we, we could do, if we don't want to increase our ask, is bypass the kindergarten tuition reduction. We don't want to do that. Okay.
Take it step by step. If we, if we can do this for next year, I think that's, that's great progress. Not to say that we. I get, I get what you're saying for the rest of the year, but.
But we want that to happen for the rest of the year. That's so far from our financial reality right now, right?
Yep.
And I, I mean, budget wise, I, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we can, especially with devising expectations.
I mean, just think about that, right? This is just paying people that come here and work like a decent amount.
Call them in the most to a hundred dollars. So the motion would be to amend our budget request for next year to include an additional twenty three thousand dollars or such or not necessary to just to support a. Teacher, a substitute teacher rate at one hundred dollars a day.
Is the motion on the floors or second?
Just comment.
Seconded by Mrs. Caleri. Is there a comment related to this issue?
Yeah.
All right, so Kim, would everyone be all right with tabling the motion for a moment so we can hear this comments?
Yes.
Okay, I mean it.
Someone can.
Oh, it's a.
Mrs. Clear, Jack online, can you read it?
Good.
Kate Running, nine forest notch. The pandemic has been so disruptive to consistent learning. We need to be sure we maximize every day a child is in school. Therefore, we need to recruit and pay for qualified substitutes. Increasing pay may attract a core group of substitute teachers to become invested in the school, adopt its culture and philosophies, and earn students' trust. I support raising the rates for substitutes.
Well said.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
It's funny.
Okay, no more comments. So let's get back to that. There was a motion made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mrs. Caleri, and I think we should do a roll call, vote on this.
Can I just get, can I just get some clarity? So we're not gonna get a raise this year, so we're gonna continue.
This motion is not about the, this year.
Okay, I just don't, I, would I, in, in this, I still want to, how do we get away with not paying?
Let's.
Well, so, so, Miss Curran, there's a, there's a second motion on the floor. If you, you had clarification, so the answer is it's only, it's hold on, it's only for next year that the motion is. We have to vote on the motion. So if you're against it for whatever reason, you can't vote against, but there's a mo, there's a motion in the floor. Remember, they're, they're kind of two different issues, right? Right now, we're talking about next year.
Okay, so we.
There's been a motion on the floor to increase.
Okay.
There's been a motion on the floor to increase the substitute, to, 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 increase our budget request to include the hundred dollar per sub. Okay, per, per day for substitute teachers. Okay, Ms. Clear seconded it. All in favor, Ms. Cleary?
Aye.
Excuse me, I should say all in favor, Ms. Cleary. It's, it's, you know, it's late. I'm, I'm just defeated here, okay? Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Mr. Kerry?
Aye.
Ms. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClone, motion unanimously passes. So, uh, Ms. Owen, please add that to our budget request.
Yes.
You know? Yeah, just. We're seeing that and raising it.
Yeah.
So now, Mr. Curran, you wanted to raise the issue of what's going on for the rest of this academic year.
Right, and if we could say.
Fiscal year.
Uh, uh, so we're still on the budget right now as opposed to, is this, is this budgeted that?
No.
We've gone off of what?
I think a bunch of current rates.
So. For the current year, but do, do we have a budgeted, do we have, okay, so my question is, is that if we're talking about. And say eighteen was ten thousand, I'm sorry. Eighty six thousand. Right, and eighteen? So that was budgeted eighty six thousand dollars in eighteen.
No, that's what we spent.
That's what we spent, okay. So eighty nine thousand in nineteen, fifty seven thousand, and we're only up to thirty nine thousand dollars. I don't understand why we can't get. June. You guys see that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need, I mean, we need another seven grand. If we.
Where do we budget for that? Because if, if you think about it, if our budget was eighty six thousand that we spent in February of eighteen, then we should have budgeted. The same amount. We should be way on the budget. I don't, I don't get it. You see what I'm saying? We had eighty six thousand dollars a week.
Did we, did we have a sub budget? I don't know if we have a sub, sub line.
What, what would it come to?
General, I, I don't know. That's, that's a question for Mrs. Owen.
I'm sorry. My only concern is with, with looking at the spend, which is rising, what happens is. Spent cushions always rise and they always, I don't think I've ever seen them stable budget because you have that one unanticipated person. But what happens is the bottom number, so all, some of those other accounts that don't spend everything subsidize short volume. So our bottom number doesn't go into the bread.
Yep.
Just some of the pluses, you know, outweigh the minus. For example, we budgeted thirty seven thousand at Ogden for substitutes. We're up to sixty.
So. We budgeted thirty seven, we're up to sixty. Is this right now? So, so it did go up. I, I understand this as opposed to that.
This includes long term subs to come in and teach your salary. I didn't include that in here. So if you want just short term subs.
Yeah.
We, we budgeted twenty seven thousand.
Twenty seven, that we budgeted twenty seven thousand bras, could have run it at eight point four thousand, eight four hundred.
But then when you look at the, the line above it, which is the long term subs. Um, we're minus forty four thousand, so.
The long term subs, we, we're over budget.
Right.
Those, those two goals.
So what will happen is that some, whatever remaining in regular daily budget will offset. But not, you don't need the minus. It balances, it's a balancing.
So I don't know if you could do this on the fly. Do you have a trajectory for our overall sub budget?
Overall.
Yeah, the debt of all, for all three schools, the net for.
I mean, I have it, I have it in front of me by school just calling now and it's.
Well, maybe, well, maybe the, maybe we could ask this, maybe we should, we should do this as a, a more detailed presentation for next time. Because I don't think we can come up with all the data that we have on the fly right now.
Do it at our subcommittee.
We can do it in our subcommittee.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Are we doing that tomorrow? I don't think, I don't think we do that tomorrow.
Well, we can talk about that offline, right?
Yeah.
All right, so.
We need things written down now. We can't just have like a.
What do you mean?
I'm gonna, I'll, we'll meet.
We'll meet this one committee.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
With our goal to be a hundred dollars.
We dig around and find money, sell some books.
Okay, so, all right, so Ms. Owen, does that conclude the finance report?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, school committee comments, the A's on updates, uh, policy subcommittee.
So we are reexamining E, B, C, F, A, right?
We'd love to reexamine that.
I don't even like those letters individually.
No. Yeah.
It's a great word.
Epic, epic is my least favorite word.
It's, it's.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I get my.
So we added the blue text. The version we talked about, thank you. The version we talked about last time included the strike through at the end of the policy, but then. Chair McClone was kind enough to send the text that is now the third paragraph of the policy to revise it. To. Right, the forty eight hour. Correct.
Any change that occurs more than forty eight hours in advance of a regularly scheduled SC meeting, and the SC is not convening an emergency session. The superintendent may exercise operational discretion relative to said change you got. Any decision of the superintendent shall have effect until the next regularly scheduled SC meeting, at which there will be a public discussion on any policy changes.
I think that's pretty good.
That sounds phenomenal.
All right, so is there a motion to approve E, B, C, F, A submitted by our policy subcommittee, motion made by Mr. Dial, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Clary, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Policy subcommittee, is that it? Or is there another call? Okay, all right, great. Um, the webpage outline, Ms. Clary.
Okay, progress, this is progress. This is the outline that we came up with. We have not yet conferred with Ms. Raden on this, but we plan to do that given the school committee questioning with or without conditions for suppression and input changes. But we would like to create a more user friendly and informative web resource on the existing school. Website that provides information about our committee and the work that we do. It would be a place where we could upload the meeting updates. We could upload any correspondence that the committee. Needs to have from time to time with the community. Um, we can provide a little more information about who we are and how, what we do happens and how it impacts the community. Does anyone?
Thanks to the meetings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Links to the meetings and, and archive links to.
This is a great idea. I'm happy to see I have one homework assignment. I'm happy to, to write all kinds of stuffs. Just let me know what you want me to write and I'll, I'll do it.
Great.
Okay, um, and I see one is clear. I can do that. That's no problem. But if there's other things that you think I would be able to draft for you, then let me know. This is great. This is exactly what we need because many people just, they, they, they're getting things from all different places. It should be a one stop shopping, very clear. I mean, one thing that we've done is this particular committee, I think, has made. Leaps and bounds in terms of, uh, public, like, you know, outreach, communication and transparency. So let's continue. This is just continuation that I.
Just want it to be user friendly.
Can I, can I add something? Put this together. Who has?
Mrs. Clary.
This is awesome because I gotta be honest with you. This was, I've been frustrated with, with the website, to be honest with you.
Same.
And to see these, I actually thought it was a, a salary employee, like somebody that worked for the school committee. I mean, I'm sorry, for the school to put this together. Because I think not only that we should do this as a web line, but I'd like to see this for the athletics. I'd like to see it for the sports, the arts, the after school programs, the skate. I'd like to see it, the student page, and I'd like to see the lunch program. the student page, and I'd like to see the lunch program, all this updated like we, so, anything that we do, I would, I would hope that you take from our lead, and I speak to you guys, is lead, and I, I, I just think this is, this is exactly what we need, to see it in every part of our school system would be great, because I do go through the website, and there's a lot of stuff that doesn't go anywhere, and, and, and I was hopeful that this came from the technology department, but it doesn't, but.
Conjunction and collaboration.
Yeah.
We are, and she's reworking the new, so the, the website's gonna be up to date.
So there's a plethora of information on the website, it's just not any. Like I said, like with sports, it could be, like with sports, it'd be like, where's the next game, you know, where's this, and then arts could be.
I don't know.
It's probably.
Well, I think, I, I do.
So, one thing I will thank you very much, that's a very nice compliment, and we will take it, but I have one question, and want to bring everyone's attention to point six on the back of the page. The school facilities committee currently lives on our page on the website, and I don't think that's where it should live. I think it should have its own web presence, whether it's on the town site or a separate site.
As distinguished.
That's really work, though.
Okay. Yeah, but I just don't want it to be like our thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the school facilities committee is like a, you know, it's like a six-month-old date, so, we're, we're, we're trying to.
I want it to have a discussion as a whole.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good, good point.
We're seeking your approval, so we can, I mean, we're meeting with Mrs. Radden on Monday.
I don't think we need to vote on it, but.
There's running by you, because we are a committee, and it's not just the subcommittee, that's all.
Assign me some homework, and I'll do it for you.
Yeah, you go.
Okay, thank you for that, school facilities committee, they're gonna be presenting to us at our next meeting.
The date, the six, the six-month-old date.
It is, it's going to be, it's going to be presenting to us, and I think it's gonna be pretty informative, there's gonna be, so, on March 30th, they'll be giving us an update in terms of progress, like a substantive detailed update in terms of progress, I think the designer that was elected to conduct the condition, these things, as conditioning, existing conditions study at all schools will be present, also, this will not be, the presentation of the SOI and request for a vote, that will follow, I think, at the next meeting in April, where they'll ask us to, having been armed with that information from the 30th, and then they'll present additional information on, on the SOI and ask for our approval, which they need in order for, submit to the MSBA, then they'll go to the select board, get their approval, and then it'll be submitted by April 27th. So there's a lot going on in the next couple of weeks, with school facilities can be major steps.
Studying stuff.
And then simultaneously, they're, you know, we're going to be, you know, updating, informing the public, and there's gonna be some more public outreach efforts there, so, this is sort of part of that, right, updating the school committee is another forum to elaborate on these developments. Subcommittee reports, Mr. Cleary. Mr. Dial?
None.
Mr. Kearney?
I know there was a, so I wasn't even, it was a work emergency.
Yeah, yeah, we have a wellness committee, so we met, yeah, and we reviewed the vendor, the vendor, I'm sorry, I lose my voice, the vending machine that we're going to get, and that's being built, it's going to have adjustable shelving, so that we can put sandwiches in, we can put yogurts, and so, anyway, but the unfortunate part takes a while, everything's backed up, so, it should be here, and I've been running during the summer, but absolutely ready, it's all.
But it's all, it's been ordered, so it could come, it could, we'll put it together when it's done, right, like, when it comes, we'll stop putting stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll, so, so we're really excited about that, and then we finished our assessment that we've been doing with the department, and I'm sorry, the person that we've been working with, the health coach, and we looked at the website, so, that's, one group is looking at that, and then also are, one of our reps, high school reps, Lucy, is working with Mr. Ford, because she brought up the idea of looking at how they could maybe incorporate exercise or some other experience journey, so, so they're doing that, and the rest of us are looking at the website, and we'll look at building up that website, make sure that it's has all the information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney, is that it?
That's it.
Mrs. St. Arch? You kind of just had yours, but, which are the website and the policy?
Amazing updates, and now we're done.
Superintendent email, well, collective bargaining first, I think we mentioned earlier, just to sort of highlight it, what, you know, we've, we've been exchanging proposals, so we're still in the middle of bargaining for the next contract cycle, and superintendent email, we will have an executive session next time, because we need to discuss our superintendent's contract renewal, which will be happening as well, along with the teachers' contracts, so, we'll be doing that in executive session, and that'll be next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda for, obviously, Dr. Sullivan, you won't be present for that next session. Okay, all right, approval of minutes, there is one set of minutes that I know of that we need to approve, that is the March 3rd, 2021 budget hearing and school committee meeting, Mr. Dial will not be voting on this, but everyone else was present, so, Mr. Dial, you took abstain from this, obviously. All right, is there a motion on the floor, or are there any revisions?
Some.
The motion has, okay, there's a motion to, I, I imagine that's to approve the, the minutes estimated by our secretary, Mr. St. Arch, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cleary, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention?
One.
Okay, motion clearly passes, those minutes, minute minutes are approved, thank you, Mrs. St. Arch. All right, there are no topics that I know of that were not recently anticipated by the chair, 48 hours, nothing's been brought to my attention. Like I said, no executive session tonight, but there will be tomorrow, next meeting, so look forward to that, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting? Motion made by Mrs. St. Arch, there's a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's it, folks, thank you, thanks all.
Thank you.